It being five past seven by my watch, town meeting will come to order. Quorum being present, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kindly remain standing. I'm going to ask Reverend Natasha Stewart, the priest in charge at St. Luke's, to offer an invocation. Reverend?
As we gather tonight to discuss the business of our town and to plan for its future, we ask God that you so guide our minds, so fill our hearts, so ease our anxieties, that we can work together with respect and dignity for the benefit of all the people who live, work, and enjoy our town. Dear Lord, help us focus on the things that unite us and work amicably to reconcile the things that divide, remembering we are stronger when we come together for the good of all. We give thanks for everyone who is here tonight, and we ask that you watch over those who could not be. We lift this up in the name of the One who unifies us all. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Stewart. All right, I understand a number of people are still coming in. If you could just try to enter quietly, that will help us move along. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with a formal reading of the warrant. It's been moved, seconded, discussed, there being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I have nominated Peter Topin to serve as assistant moderator. Is there a second? Moved, seconded, discussed, there being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Would the assistant moderator and the following tellers please stand to be sworn by the town clerk? In fact, Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to read out the list?
Could everybody raise your right hand, please, all the tellers? Assistant moderator? We have Chris Maraki, Allison Short, Carolyn Sones, thank you for filling in, Linda Plowman, Ann White, Tom Gavin, Peter Topin, Ellen Kelly, and Susan Frankel, and Rich Harding if you're here, otherwise it'll be Ann Brine. Do you solemnly swear to uphold the position to which you have been appointed this evening? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd ask the Chairman of the Advisory Committee, Lincoln Heineman, to introduce his board members.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Lincoln Heineman, I'm the Chair of the Advisory Committee. To my left are the members Jamie Gilmore, Patrice Metro, Elise Rousseau, Vice Chair Jerry Kelly, Michael Westhorst, Anthony Antoniello, and unable to be here because he's away on business is Sean DeLacy.
I'd ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, John Danahue, to introduce the board members. The Town Accountants, the Town Administrator, and Town Council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our finance, or strike that, your Finance Director Nancy Holt, your Town Administrator James Boudreau, at the very end it's your Town Attorney, Town Council Cindy Armara, and let me introduce my Board of Selectmen, your Board of Selectmen, my Vice Chair Maura Curran, Anthony Vignani, Sean Harris, and Karen Canfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask the Chairman of the School Committee, Richard Hebert, to introduce his board and the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing the School Committee, Janice Lindblom, Michael Long, two of our members, Michael Hayes and Peter Gates are detained, they're not here at the moment. We have our Superintendent, Mr. Ron Griffin, and our Business Director, Paul Donlin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hebert. I'd like to recognize the dignitary present, our State Representative Patrick Kearney. Patrick, would you mind standing up and giving the crowd a wave? Representative, thank you for taking the time to visit this meeting. I have a few announcements to be made while people are still filing in. First of all, as you know, the annual town election is on May 18th at 2019. There are several people who are not seeking reelection who I'd like to recognize at this point. One is Selectman Chairman John Danahue, who was first elected to the Board of Selectmen in 2007 and has served 12 years. Appreciate it if you could give John a round of applause. Our Assessor Fred Avila was first elected in 1998 and has served 21 years on the Board of Assessors. Fred, thank you for your dedication and many years of public service to the town on the The Chairman of the School Committee, Rich Hebert, a real gentleman, a truly kind person, has been on the School Committee since 2010. Rich, would you please just give us a wave and let's give Rich... Now is the winter of our departing candidates. We have people running for office for a variety of offices, and I'd at least like to recognize those who are running for the Board of Selectmen. I'll give you their names in alphabetical order and ask them to just give you a wave, and if you could give them a round of applause for their bravery in running for office, I'd appreciate it. That would be Karen Canfield, Karen Connolly, Andrew Goodrich, John McLaughlin, and William Tibbetts. Give us a wave if you're here. Thank you very much. We have some upcoming events I'd like to mention. Ship-Shaped Day is Saturday, April 27th, 2019. The Special Town Meeting, May 13th, 2019, that's on a Monday, and then the Annual Town Election on May 18th, which I mentioned to you. We have several former town employees and officials who have passed since our last meeting, and I'd like to take a moment to ask you to remember these people in your thoughts and prayers. John E. White passed on December 1st, 2018. John was a municipal driver for the Council on Aging. Gil Patterson II passed on December 4th, 2018. Chief Patterson, well, he was the police chief. Many of you will remember him. Annette Moore passed on January 6th, 2019. Situate Public Schools was a teacher at the high school. David Hines, you will have known David from his work at the polls for many, many years, passed on January 10th, 2019. Marie P. Sullivan passed on January 15th, 2019. Marie was an election worker for quite some time. And those of you who attended Situate Schools and have a musical inclination will mourn the departure of Donald L. Hermance, Hermance, February 28th, 2019. Don was really big in educating the kids in music. If you could just take a moment to remember them in your thoughts and prayers, I'd appreciate Thank you. Three reminders before we move on to the recitation of the rules. Reminder number one, there is childcare available in the cafeteria. Number two, if you are a non-voter, please move over to the section on my right, that is the non-voting section. And third, as you checked in, you should have received a, told it's a pink voter card, you should have a pink voter card. If you don't, please go back and get that squared out, you'll need that in order to be able to vote. Thank you, yeah, I'm sorry. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 383rd Situate Annual Town Meeting. You have the honor of serving as legislators in one of the oldest parliamentary bodies seated in the world. It is my honor to serve as your moderator. My name is Richard Bowen. The moderator chairs the meeting and decides questions of order. I do not vote on the articles, I act as your referee. Let me take a couple of minutes to explain to you the rules of the meeting. If you know the rules, you can rule the meeting. First, the town of Situate has two branches of government. The executive branch represented here today by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, and the legislative branch of government. Town meeting is the legislative branch of government, and each person seated here tonight is a citizen legislator, here to do a job, to review budgets and to make law. The executive branch boards, whose members are our guests here today, have come before you with certain requests seeking your approval. These requests take the form of articles that are on the warrant that you have in your hands. You are within your rights as citizen legislators to question those articles, to determine whether they are a good or a bad idea, and to act upon the requests as you see fit. This is your meeting, this is your work, this is for you to do as you see fit, not necessarily as either the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, or any other executive branch board in this town might wish it. You each have a very important friend in the work that you will do tonight. The Advisory Committee is the board that is here to serve you and advise you. The Advisory Committee is a standing body of Town Meeting. While Town Meeting meets but two or three times a year, the Advisory Board meets all year, serving as your representatives to vet matters that come before the town and to act on budgetary transfer requests that come before it during the course of the fiscal year. The Advisory Committee works hard, serving as your watchdog, and it will make recommendations to you about each of the executive branch of government's request to you. You should pay close attention to its reports. Like any legislative body, Town Meeting operates under certain procedural rules. These rules derive from state law, the parliamentary manual Town Meeting time, the charter, the bylaws, and custom. Here is a summary of the rules. You will also find a summary of the rules in the Advisory Board handout, which you should have received or picked up on the way in. Here is a summary. All non-voters except for professional consultants advising town boards must sit in the non-voter section, which is the left front bleacher where I am pointing right now. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak, provided that they are duly recognized by the moderator and unless a timely objection is lodged to their speaking, in which case we will take a vote as to whether they may speak. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. This traditional courtesy shows respect to the other persons who are here in attendance and helps the town clerk and staff in keeping the minutes of the meeting. Speakers representing a board, a community group, or a client should state this relationship as they identify themselves to the meeting. If you are an article sponsor, make your motion before you make your speech and presentation, otherwise I will rule you out of order. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for a presentation. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full allotment of time, keeping in mind the old saying, "Brevity is the soul of wit." A quality I fail in all the time. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has been seconded. Town meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone. I will do my best to keep track of people in the order that they arrive at the different microphones, but quite honestly, as I get older, it's easier to see this microphone than either of those. But go where you like. I will attempt to recognize you in the order you get to the microphone. Only after being recognized by the moderator may a speaker address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor or speaking without recognition shows disrespect to your fellow Town Meeting members, disrupts the orderly flow of the meeting, and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article and three minutes on the second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until all those persons who have not yet spoken before I may recognize that person. That's a matter of town bylaw. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Please address only those matters of general, not personal, interest, and do not indulge in any personal attacks on the motives or qualifications of any meeting member and that person's right or ability to address the meeting. You may ask questions of any town official through the moderator. Be advised that a town official may, for any variety of reasons, may choose not to respond or may respond in a manner that you find personally unsatisfactory. Neither the moderator nor the meeting has the power to compel an answer, in which case your sole recourse is to draw your own conclusions about the quality of the response and to vote accordingly. Now listen to this one very closely, please. Should you tire of debate, you may suffer in silence if you choose to do so, or you may offer the motion, "I move the question." Please remember this important procedural point. You may not arrive at a microphone, make a grand or small speech, and then move the question. That's called mousetraping. If you want to move the question, come up, say, "I move the question. I'll look for a second, we'll put it to a vote." A point of order, which sometimes one will hear at one of these meetings, relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for prolonging or reviving debate. There are no points of information. If you want information, just ask for it in the course of the debate. On voice votes, I listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. Pay close attention here, please. If you question my call, please rise. If seven people rise, we will take a hand count. Don't bother blogging about it on Facebook. If you think I called it wrong, stand up, and we'll count it. It's not a big deal. But if you snooze, you lose. Tellers will count only those persons in the bleachers or floor seating sections. Persons standing away from the seating will not be counted. Section 20,150 subsection G of the town bylaws allows the moderator to declare a two-thirds vote. If the moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, and not seven or more voters on Facebook, seven or more voters who are here paying attention, we will take account. And in fact, just so you know, there are some, just from what I've read or heard, some articles of particularly great interest here tonight, I mean, not that they aren't all fascinating, and on those articles I may just simply go right to a vote by taking account. As you may have detected, the acoustics in this room are bad. Anyone having trouble hearing may move to another section of the room. There are plenty of seats still available up in the front, so bring your smiling faces forward and you'll hear this gavel even better. Please silence your cell phones. Honorary resolutions? I haven't heard about any. Any from the Board of Selectmen? You want to give it now or save it for the State of the Union later? Okay, Lincoln, the advisory, now or later? Well, I'm liking the sound of this. Okay, great. Let's see. We've got five minutes before we have to do the special town meeting. That's a special town meeting within the annual. Let's see what we can do. At 7:30, we'll adjourn to the special town meeting and then we'll return to the annual. First motion, please. Selectman Chairman Danahue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you haven't gotten the advisory report, I strongly recommend grabbing it, using it throughout the course of the evening. Before we get started, and I wish and ask the moderator not to call me out of order just yet, but indulge me, being a selectman is never an easy task. This person dedicated six solid years to the town of Situate, being a selectman, working hard for his town he grew up in. He loves his town, remained in his town, and aside from all those years of being a selectman, he further dedicated himself to you folks yet again. Fifteen years of coming to Town Meeting, going through all these articles, helping people, remaining objective as a moderator, with wit and wisdom, addressing people, trying to make sure it's a fair and balanced town meeting, not just for the annual but also a special. And tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I think it's only appropriate that you folks give a rousing applause, standing ovation to Richard Bowen, who is now retiring, and this is My only regret is I tried to get a photograph of Rich when he was a new selectman in the eighties, and unfortunately it was just a little gritty, otherwise I would have liked to have put it up here. But again, thank you.
John, thank you very much. I'll fill the 60 seconds till we have to do the special town meeting. Thank you very much for giving me the privilege of being able to serve you as a selectman way back when, and as a moderator for the last 15 years. Truly, it's been one of the highlights of my life. You know, each one of us here tonight is a guardian of the gates of democracy. The gates of democracy are under siege right now. I urge that each one of you rise up and defend it with everything that you have. Our way of life is being threatened all around the world. There's a fire arising in the east that will overwhelm us unless we're prepared to defend this country and what it stands for. We honor and think of the people who serve us on the ground, on the sea, and in the air, and we thank them for what they do for us. But remember, what those people are doing for us right now stands for nothing unless each one of us does everything we can to protect this country and the democracy that they are fighting for and that our fathers and grandfathers and forefathers have fought for for hundreds of years. God save the republic! With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting. It's been moved, seconded, discussed, there being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the annual town meeting stands adjourned until the conclusion of the special town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that the warrant has been properly posted. The same rules that I described at great length apply. We'll start with Article 1 on the motion. Selectman Chairman Danahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town transfer from available funds in the Treasury, the sum of $711,780, for the purpose of fully funding the following accounts established under Articles 4, 8, and 9 of the April 9th, 2018 annual town meeting as written in the warrant.
It's been moved, seconded, discussed. Chairman Danahue.
Thank you. Folks, these are basically accounting changes for what we budgeted last year. As a result, some of our departments actually had more costs, and so some departments didn't have those costs. So we're doing some funneling of money, I hate using that word, but exchanging money from one department to the other. You'll see that one of them is the fire department. We had overtime to the tune of $210,708. That's because we have a number of firefighters that we need to hire. As a result, we needed to hire back the ones we have, and they're working overtime. We have debt servicing of $69,000. There's a hauling contract for $140,000, which is our transfer station, and also for transfer station overtime because we ended up having somebody who retired and we need to replace that employee. The hauling contract's more expensive because recycling's getting more expensive and some areas aren't taking less. We also have water charges and assessment for $20,000 from the Water Enterprise, and then also we have $252,070 for electrical repair for Storm Riley down on the pier. So this is the amount that we're looking to take from other departments to pay for expenses that were not anticipated from last year. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Lincoln Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Selectman Danahue mentioned, this is necessary in order to balance the budget that was passed by this body last year. I would, as I would echo what Selectman Danahue said regarding the hauling contracts, this is certainly an area that is going to require further attention in the future as the recycling, the worldwide recycling market has had serious changes and our refuse is not as sellable as it was in the past. Nevertheless, the Advisory Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion from the microphones. There being no one at the microphones, all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article 2, Chairman Danahue.
Thank you. I move that the town transfer the sum of $3,999.14 from free cash for the purpose of paying prior fiscal year unpaid bills.
It's been moved, seconded, discussed. Chairman Danahue.
So these are bills that came in after we had finished our fiscal year that ended back in June of 2018. Bills came in after the fact. As a result, now we have to pay them, but we need to make sure we pay them retroactively. And this is a routine article that comes up at every annual and special town meeting. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Selectman Danahue mentioned, this is a routine article that is necessary to pay prior year bills. The Advisory Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the microphones, passengers, this motion requires a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. John, before you go to the next motion, if you are a non-voter, and I do apologize for having to ask you to do this, the non-voting section is actually that where there are those lonely three people with that very cute child right there. Oh, hi. That's where we want you to go, over with the beautiful couple and the wonderfully cute child. So just slide on over. Okay, one, two, three, well, we won't single you out and embarrass you. Okay, thank, thank, oh, all right, this is like a flood. Thanks, guys, really appreciate it. Okay. Article 3, Chairman Danahue.
Thank you. I move the town transfer from... I move the town transfer from free cash the sum of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of retiring the debt as listed in the warrant.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, Chairman Danahue.
This is an article that's going to pay down two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in short-term loans. Instead of going out to bond it, it's our way of looking at it, trying to service it to pay it from free cash instead of trying to incorporate it in a larger bond.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to echo the Chairman Danahue's comments, this use of free cash is appropriate in order to reduce our long-term borrowing costs and certainly give credit where it's due to the Finance Director Nancy Holt in identifying this and finding these savings. The Advisory Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Discussion from the floor, lady to my left.
I don't know if this is the right place.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Tracy Kitty, Seven L Wife Lane.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is the right place to bring it up. Is this the one where they do upgrades to public facilities, security upgrades?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Okay, anyone else at the mics? Ma'am, you're all set. Okay, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I'll accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting, seen A.D., and to reconvene the annual town meeting. Moved, seconded, discussion there being done, special town meeting is adjourned, seen A.D., and the annual town meeting is now in session again. Article One and/or consent agenda, Chairman Danahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to take Articles One, Two, Six, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Nineteen, and Twenty out of order, and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motion shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded, thank you. Okay, just before we get into discussion, I'm going to tell you how we will handle A consent agenda is a procedural device that allows groups of what are considered to be routine articles to be bundled up together and voted in a group. Most, although not necessarily all of the articles in this bundle are ones that seldom if ever engender discussion. Nonetheless, there may be things of interest to people, so what I will do is I will read out each of the article numbers. If you wish to hear a presentation on any particular article amongst those that were grouped into this consent agenda, just say hold when I call the article number out. John, did that cover what you wanted to say? Okay. No, no, we're all set. Article One. Did I hear hold? No? Okay. Article Two. Article Six.
Hold.
Ah, heard that one. Article Eight. Article Ten. Article Eleven. Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen. Article Sixteen. Article Seventeen. Article Nineteen. And Article Twenty. All right, I heard one hold, that being Article Six. What we'll do at this point is we'll proceed to a vote on the unheld articles. Some of these require a two-thirds vote, so the minimum quantum of vote to approve the consent agenda will be two-thirds. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda motion and the articles that are included within the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Articles One, Two, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Nineteen, and Twenty are now disposed of. We will return to Article Six in the ordinary order of consideration. That brings us to Article Three. And before John gets a, you want a glass of water before you read this motion? The motion that Chairman Danahue is going to read to you is, and I'm not kidding, it's four pages long. Now, I pity John having to read this. At this point, usually, people blame the lawyers. Well, okay, he's a lawyer, I'm a lawyer, there are other lawyers here. There are, there's only one thing that two lawyers can agree on, let's see, one, two, John and I will agree that the third one, Bond Counsel, is an idiot for making us read all this. So, Bond Counsel is at fault, not John or me. So, John, you read it. What I will do is, once John is done reading it and we get a second, I will ask you to turn to page twenty-one in your Advisory Committee booklets. There are an alphabet list of items A through X listed on page twenty-one and thereafter, and I will ask for holds on A through X if any of these pique your interest and you want to have further discussion on them. So, with that preface as to how we'll handle this procedurally, we'll let Selectman Chairman Danahue read the motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, transfer from free cash the sum of eight hundred eighty-four thousand nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings, the sum of twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Transfer from wastewater sewer enterprise retained earnings, the sum of two hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Transfer from the transfer station enterprise retained earnings, the sum of thirty thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars, thirty-four cents. Transfer from the waterways enterprise retained earnings, the sum of one hundred and nineteen thousand sixty-one dollars. Transfer from the capital stabilization fund, the sum of two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Transfer from the waterway, Water Enterprise Capitalization Fund, the sum of two hundred thousand dollars. Transfer from the sewer enterprise capital stabilization fund, the sum of two hundred thousand dollars. Transfer the sum of nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents from Article Four, Capital I, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, ambulance. Transfer the sum of sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars from Article Five, I, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, generator at the Situate High School. Transfer the sum of seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars, sixty-four cents from Article Five, P, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, Jenkins School Playground Stairs. Transfer the sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Article Three, O, Annual Town Meeting, April 2017, Hadley Roof Trim and Facia. Transfer the sum of five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents from Article Three, Double, Capital B, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, high school floors, science cafeteria, and stairs. Transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty-seven thou- I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty-seven hundred dollars from Article Three, Z, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, high school expansion tanks. Transfer the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from Article Five, K, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, town hall ventilation. Transfer the sum of twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents from Article Four, A, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, replace DPW Truck One-Dash-Five. Transfer the sum of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents from Article Three, S, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle two, number Two-Dash-Six replacement. Transfer the sum of four thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-six cents from Article Three, T, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number One-Dash-One replacement. Transfer the sum of nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents from Article Three, W, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Two-Dash-Four replacement. Transfer the sum of four thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-two cents from Article Three, Y, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle two, number Two-Dash-One replacement. Transfer the sum of one hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents from Article Three, P, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle Two-Dash-Three replacement. Transfer the sum of twenty, two thousand three hundred and twenty-five cents from Article Four, M, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, purchase of six Club 420 boats, and transfer the sum of six hundred and forty-six dollars, ninety-four cents from Annual Town, I'm sorry, from Article Six of Special Town Meeting, November 2014. Transfer the sum of five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, sixty-two cents from Article Four, O, Annual Town Meeting, April Twel- 2012, F-150 pickup truck, and transfer the sum of two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from Article Three, Double J, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, replace vehicle number Fifty-four. Transfer the sum of sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars from Article Four, Special Town Meeting, November 2014, FEMA roadway storm sandy town share. Transfer the sum of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents from Article Five, A, the Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, the refuse truck. Transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty-one dollars, ninety-four cents from Article Three, Double Q, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Thirty-seven replacement. Transfer the sum of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from Article Four, U, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, that's the water finish pumps and VFD drive. Transfer the sum of four hundred and twelve dollars from Article Four, W, Annual Town Meeting, 2016, replace water truck number Thirty-five. Transfer the sum of forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, fifty-two cents from Article Three, Double B, Annual Town Meeting of April 2017, granulated active carbon material replacement. Transfer the sum of three hundred and nineteen dollars, twelve cents from Article Three, Double C, Annual Town Meeting, April 2017, Chevy pickup, and transfer the sum of two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-one cents from Article Three, X, Annual Town Meeting, April 2017, redevelopment of public wells and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of fourteen million seven hundred thousand dollars in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Double, Section Seven and Eight, and any other enabling authority, and further that the selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources, and the said selectmen are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of the grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing totaling seventeen million ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for the purpose of funding the cost of the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement plan submitted in accordance with Section Six-Dash-Six of the Situate Town Charter and outlined as follows. A, I move to transfer the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of road and sidewalk improvements. B, I move to raise the appropriate sum of eighty-four thousand dollars and transfer from the capital stabilization fund the sum of sixteen thousand dollars for a total of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of expanding the Cudworth Cemetery. C, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of updating the ADA evaluation and transition plan. D, I move to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of one million six hundred thousand dollars in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapters Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of athletic renovation project, the purpose of athletic field renovation project at the high school, and further that the selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purpose of this vote from federal, state, or private sources, and the said selectmen are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing. E, I move to transfer from the capital stabilization fund the sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the Hummer Rock Fire Station quarters. F, I move to transfer the sum of a hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents from free cash. Transfer the sum of ninety-five, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents from Article Four, I, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, ambulance. Transfer the sum of sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars from the Article Five, I, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, generator at the high school. Transfer the sum of seven thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-four cents from Article Five, P, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, Jenkins School Playground Stairs. Transfer the sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Article Three, O, Annual Town Meeting, April 2017, Hadley Roof Tin and Facia. Transfer the sum of five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents from Article Three, Double B, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, high school floors, science and cafeteri- high school floors, science cafeteria, and stairs. Transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty-seven dollars from Article Three, Z, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, high school expansion tanks. Transfer the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from Article Five, K, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, town hall ventilation. Transfer the sum of two hundred, twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents from Article Four, A, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, replacement of DPW Truck One-Dash-Five. Transfer the sum of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, fifty-one cents from Article Three, S, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Two-Dash-Six replacement. Transfer the sum of four thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, eighty-six cents from Article Three, T, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number One-Dash-One replacement. Transfer the sum of nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents from Article Three, W, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Four, Two-Dash-Four replacement. Transfer the sum of four thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-two cents from Article Three, Y, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Two-Dash-One replacement. Transfer the sum of one hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents from Article Three, P, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, vehicle number Two-Dash-Three replacement. Transfer the sum of two thousand three hundred twenty, three hundred dollars and twenty-five cents from Article Four, M, Annual Town Meeting, April 2016, purchase of six Club 420 boats, and transfer the sum of six hundred forty-six dollars, ninety-four cents from Article Six, Special Town Meeting, November 2014 totaling two hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars for the purpose of security upgrades for the public facilities. I'm getting there. G, move to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of three hundred thousand dollars in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of forshore protection. H, I move to transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash and transfer that sum to the capital stabilization for the purpose of replacing an ambulance. I, I move to transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of MS-Dash-Four compliance. J, I move to transfer the sum of one hundred and ten thousand dollars for free cash, from free cash, for the purpose of school technology. K, I move to transfer the sum of forty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of replacement of truck number Two-Dash-Nine. L, I move to transfer the sum of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of replacement of BACO. M, I move to transfer the sum of twelve thousand sixty-two dollars from free cash and transfer the sum of sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars from Article Four, Special Town Meeting, November Fourteenth, FEMA roadway storm sandy town share totaling seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollars for the purpose of the repair and upgrade of fire doors at the Wampanoak School. N, I move to transfer the sum of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings and to transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from the Sewer Enterprise Capitalization, Capital Stabilization Fund totaling three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of Phase Four of the SCADA upgrades. O, I move to transfer the sum of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings. Transfer the sum of five thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, sixty-two cents from Article Four, O, Annual Town Meeting, April Twel- 2012, F-Dash-150 pickup truck, and transfer the sum of two hundred and forty-one dollars, fifty-two cents from Article Three, Double J, Annual Town Meeting, April 2018, replacement of vehicle number Fifty-four totaling thirty thousand for the purpose of OSHA and SPCC compliance. P, I move to transfer the sum of a hundred thousand dollars from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings for the purpose of replacing the de-watering heating system. Q, I move to transfer the sum of thirty thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-four cents from transfer station enterprise retained earnings and transfer the sum of nine thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents from Article Five, A, Annual Town Meeting, April 2014, refu- refuse, refuse truck totaling forty thousand dollars for the purpose of cracked ceiling and pavement markings. R, I move to authorize the treasurer and the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of four million dollars in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of engineering and design of water treatment and SCADA. S, I move to transfer the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization for the purpose of ice picking. T, I move to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of eight hundred thousand dollars in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight. forty-four, Section eight, or any other enabling, uh, authority for the purpose of engineering Hummer Rock Water Manes. U. I move to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of eight million dollars in accordance with Mash General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of engineering and designing water treatment plant and SCADA. V. I move to transfer the sum of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents from the Water Enterprise retained earnings. Transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents from Article three double Q. Annual Town Meeting, April, uh, twenty eighteen. Vehicle number thirty-seven. Replacement. Transfer the sum of two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from Article four U. Annual Town Meeting, April twenty sixteen. Water finish pumps and V F D drive. Transfer the sum of four hundred and twelve dollars from Article four W. Annual Town Meeting, April twenty sixteen. Replace water truck number thirty-five. Transfer the sum of forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars from Article three double B. Annual Town Meeting, April, uh, twenty seventeen. Granulated active carbon material replacement. Transfer the sum of three hundred and nineteen dollars and twelve cents from Article three double C. Annual Town Meeting, April twenty seventeen. Chevy pickup and transfer the sum of two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-one cents from Article three X. Annual Town Meeting, April, um, twenty seventeen. Replacement of public wells totaling seventy thousand for the purpose of purchasing a mini excavator. W. I move to transfer the sum of seventy-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars from Waterways' retained earnings for the purpose of the purchase of a pump-out boat. And finally, X. I move to transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars from the Waterways' return, uh, Enterprise retained earnings for the purpose of the comprehensive dredge permit.
All right. John, go get a drink of water. It's been, it's been moved. Yeah. Uh, just, couple points. Number one, there was just a, oh, is there a second? What, no second? John, you'll have to read it again. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Just one clerical change on you where it was, uh, for the purpose of engineering and I think the motion was design of a water plant that's actually for a green sand filter instead of design of water plant. So I'll give that to Madam Clerk. So it's been moved and seconded. What I will do at this point is ask you to turn to, uh, page twenty-one of your report. I'm going to go through A through, I think it's X. Yeah, it is X. Uh, and ask for holds. Anything that's held, uh, there'll be a presentation, a discussion, an individual vote. Anything that isn't held will be voted as a lump. What we want to do is to focus time and attention on those things that are really capturing people's interest and so this is how we do it. So, here we go. I heard a hold. E. K. L. M. N. O. R. S. T. V. W. X. Okay, well, my first grade teacher, Mrs. Margeson, would have been very impressed that I was able to get through the alphabet up to X. I think she always wondered about me. Okay, here are the ones that have been held, so just note them and we will return to these for further discussion. A, D, F, G, I, U. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items as moved by Chairman Danahue. Moved, seconded. Since they weren't held, there is no discussion. Approval of this, uh, lot of articles as a group will require the highest quantum of vote necessary for their adoption, which is two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous as to all the unheld items in the capital plan. We now return to capital plan item A and, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll give you the option as to whether you want to make an affirmative presentation or to answer questions from the persons who held it.
I, I'd, I'd prefer to answer the questions if that's acceptable.
All right. Question on A. Yes, you do. And if you held an item and you want to discuss it, please have, please be ready to speak from the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Rama Poshah. I am at one twenty-one Cedric Drive. My question is about, um-
Go ahead, ma'am.
The amount that's appropriated for roads and sidewalks is three hundred thousand dollars and I just wanted to know if that's enough to repave certain sections of town that don't seem to have been repaved in maybe like twenty years. Bull Rush Farm being one of them.
So, I'll defer to the DPW Director in a minute, but we haven't in place a plan for like primary roads, like rated one, two, and three. So the primary roads are the ones that are, are basically put into the process of getting repaved. A year ago, we, we spent like, I think it was one point eight million dollars on doing roads. Um, this year, you know, we're going to be looking in conjunction with pipe replacement, we're going to be repaving those roads. Um, so your road probably, I'm not sure what it's rated as far as getting repaved. It is put into like a year of, uh, within the next ten or twenty years, it's going to get repaved. Unfortunately, if it's in bad shape right now, it's not going to jump to the top unless it's really bad. Um, it's unfortunate, it's just that the fact remains that we have a lot of roads, especially the third primary, not the primary roads, but like your, not just secondary, but your third rated roads that just don't get done. Um, but if there's an issue, I'd say that, you know, contact the Department of Public Words-
I have. Oh, I have. And they've come and they've filled in potholes, but, you know, it's beyond that now. Um, my other question about that is, uh, if there are any plans to put sewer in that section of town, would that be part of a separate budget to repave those roads afterwards?
All right, uh-
Or is that a separate area?
Ma'am, uh, item number A, uh, requests an appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of road and sidewalk improvements. So discussions about sewer, uh, planning would be beyond the scope of this particular item. I will allow Chairman Danahue to offer a brief answer since one does at least have to tear up the road to put the sewer pipe in. It's a little bit of a stretch, but Chairman Danahue, go ahead, please.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure whether or not Bull Rush Farm area is on the, I'm, we have two potential plans, one with the town of, uh, Hull and Cohasset to be able to have a lot of capacity that would sewer North Situate, Minnetonka, and actually neighborhoods going all the way down to Arbor Way. I think it would be fair to say Bull Rush Farm would be a part of that project. Unfortunately, Cohasset right now is not looking to invest the money that they need to do to potentially do that. So we have a second option with the town of Cohasset because Cohasset has got to wheel its sewer over to Hull. Um, and right now, we're looking at maybe trying to do sewer in Nor- North Situate. Is that a part of the phase? I'm not sure. It could be. So if it is a part of the phase, we don't want to dig up the road or do a new road and then dig it up in the future. So it could very well be and I, I'd suggest contacting the, uh, DPW to know-
The timeline?
Well, not so much the timeline-
Well, now we're starting to go way beyond road improvements. So any other questions on item A? All right. Uh, I neglected to ask for the Advisory Committee report on the capital plan and so I'd ask for, uh, Ms. Louise Russo to give that report. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I, I certainly can't follow that presentation. Um, seventeen million in capital projects are being asked for. I'm only going to touch on a few of them. However, thirteen out of the seventeen million are related to water projects, the largest of which is item U, which is the green sand filtration system at Treatment Well seventeen A, which is currently, um, offline and this will allow it to go back online and add back three hundred and ninety thousand gallons of water a day that we can use. The plan has been approved by DPW and it will be funded through a, a Clean Water Trust loan with, at a two percent annual rate. Uh, this has already been approved. I also wanted to mention item R, which is four million for engineering and design for water plant and data management system. Basically, this will, uh, fund a study to evaluate and provide design and engineering for either a new plant, a new water plant, or, uh, upgrade of the existing one, which we need. And, um, just wanted to mention that we are looking at perhaps, um, significant expense in the twenty twenty-two capital plan, um, to, to go forward with the results of whatever this study, uh, comes up with. Uh, the other large item I want to mention is the eight hundred thousand for the Hummer Rock, uh, Water Manes Study and Design for Upgrade and Replacement. It is, uh, it very, uh, critical that this get done. Apparently, there's a leakage rate of something like forty percent, um, from the current, um, pipes, so this has to be taken care of. And again, in twenty twenty-one, there will be, um, a request for, um, um, funds to complete the construction of, of this plan. The last one that I really wanted to mention was the one point six million expenditure for the athletic field renovation. These costs are related to things that the CPC cannot fund, like the turf, like, um, press box, stands, et cetera. And this, these funds are expected to be, um, debt-funded. The Advisory Committee, um, approved of the article. The vote was six, four, and two abstaining for the Treatment Well, um, item U and unanimous for the Wampanoak Fire Doors, item M, and seven to one for the remainder of the capital plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Uh, one other bit of business, uh, I've been informed by the town clerk that we have seven hundred and fifteen members present for tonight's meeting. Please give yourselves a round of applause. To return to consideration of capital plan item A, there being no one else at the microphones. All those in favor of the motion as presented by Chairman Danahue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous vote. The next held item was D. Uh, there were multiple holds on that. Chairman Danahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, Mr. Moderator, I move at this time to advance consideration Article twelve eleven to be taken up at the same time as we discuss this Article three D.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Chairman Danahue.
So, obviously, Article three D relates to the turf field. Article twelve eleven deals with the fields as a whole from CPC. Just seems to be, make better sense to discuss both these articles together than just discussing the turf at this point and then waiting until we get Article twelve to discuss the remaining aspect of the fields. In my opinion, it makes better sense to discuss it jointly than it would be to split them up.
It's been moved and seconded. This motion can be debated if you wish. All right. No one's at the microphones. It takes a majority vote to advance consideration of an article. If this motion is approved, that means that there will be one, we'll call it a group or blanket discussion on the question of fields, which will apply to, uh, Article three D, which is the one that has been held here, and Article twelve subsection eleven, which you can find on page thirty-four of your Advisory Committee report. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared passed by a majority vote. So now, uh, next order of business is to hear presentations on Article three D and Article twelve eleven. Chairman Danahue.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Moderator, at this point, I, I would like to defer my comments to Mark Novak, uh, who is also a Situate resident to give a short, uh, presentation, if that's okay.
Well, we knew you wouldn't be giving it then, short. I'm sorry, John. Can't help it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and fellow residents of Situate. My name is Mark Novak. I am the design principal in charge of the proposed project from Activitas, where Dedham based landscape architecture and civil engineering firm. I'm also a Situate resident. Um, I will try to keep it quick.
If, sir, if you run up against the ten-minute limit, you can ask for more time and we'll ask the meeting if it wants to allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Wait, it's just like ten minutes? Just remember, a million-dollar loss for every minute over.
So next year, I think one of the first things we need to do is get a bigger screen in here. Um, but real quick, what I'd like to discuss tonight, uh, is how we got here, um, where are we going? And then, uh, touch on a few items that have, uh, come out as potential concerns with the project. So how did we get here? Uh, we all are aware that there are a number of existing needs in town, whether it be, uh, improvements to our water infrastructure, the need for a senior living center, improvements to seawalls along the coast, uh, sewer infrastructure in North Situate and Minnetonka, and also the, uh, recent study that came out from public schools regarding our elementary schools. Athletic fields is a big need in town as well, um, and it's something that needs to be addressed and it's something that needs to be addressed immediately. The project that we're talking about tonight has actually been talked about and thrown around in town for the past two decades. In two thousand and sixteen, a subcommittee, uh, published a report on athletic field use and needs assessment in town. The results of that two thousand and sixteen study were that we had a sixteen point six seven field deficit in town. Sixteen point six seven fields we need in town in order to support our current student athletes, children, adults, everyone who is recreating on these fields. So what are some of the other existing challenges that we're facing? Title nine. Right now, the women's softball team needs to travel one point four miles from the high school to get to central field to play all their practices and games. The men's baseball team simply has to walk out these doors right here. It's not right and it's not legal. It needs to be addressed. Our track, our existing track on site is non-regulation. It pitches approximately two feet from one end to the other. It's not right, needs to be addressed. The turf within the track is well beyond its useful life, needs to be taken care of. It's a safety liability concern right now. There's code issues with our grandstands and our press box. It's amazing that someone has not fallen through the grandstands and seriously injured themselves. There's access- accessibility challenges throughout the site. Um, really, there is minimal access for people with mobility, uh, issues and challenges on site. It's not right, needs to be addressed and our plan will do it. And then finally, just the overall state of the natural grass fields in town, um, are borderline deplorable. Um, if you go to any of our neighboring communities, uh, you will see, uh, a- If you go to any of our neighboring communities, you will see a completely different standard set for their athletic fields. The things that we have issues with here in town are water restrictions. Everyone's aware of them on an annual basis. We can't irrigate our fields properly. If the fields right behind the gymnasium here were to be all constructed in natural grass, during the summer, we would have to irrigate each of those fields with one to one and a half inches of water an hour. That would translate to twenty-three to thirty-five thousand gallons of irrigation water every week. With our current water infrastructure problems, I don't see it happening. The high demand. As part of the needs assessment study performed in 2016, all youth groups in town were surveyed for their current enrollment rates and their projected enrollment rates into the future. A large majority of those organizations projected growth from anywhere between five to twenty-five percent over the next five years. In order to continue to provide safe, playable surfaces for our children and for the rest of the community, something needs to give. We can't continue to work with the existing natural grass surfaces that we have. We don't have the room in town to build additional natural grass surfaces. CPC has done a great job with purchasing land and putting conservation restrictions on that land across town. I think since their inception fifteen years ago, they have purchased and put conservation restrictions on over four hundred acres of property in town. The only way for us to begin to get ahead of the curve with our athletic fields is to consider a durable product like synthetic turf. This is just a quick slide. I know nobody can read it, but it shows the number of meetings that we've had to discuss this project. On the left side is a column of design meetings. There is a number of people here tonight that have given up hours and hours of their time over the past year helping to move this design forward. And the column on the right talks about all the public meetings that have been held to discuss this project. About twenty design meetings and twenty public meetings, ample opportunity for public comment on this project. So where are we now? The first thing we did was we had the site surveyed, including wetlands, topographic survey, and we performed a site analysis to take a look at everything from solar orientation to wind direction to steep slopes, circulation patterns for vehicles and pedestrians in and around the site, look at structures, their location and conditions, et cetera. And where did that lead us? It led us to the selected plan. And I'll talk about it real quickly from east to west. The existing track and field will be completely renovated. The new track will be a four hundred meter, eight-lane, straight, six-lane oval, resilient running track. The D areas, the areas at the turns of the track that are bound by the northern and southern ends of the field, will also be completely resilient surface. The infield will be synthetic turf, new spectator seating, thousand seats on the home side, approximately two hundred seats on the visitor's side, a new press box that will be handicap accessible via handicap lift, a new concessions and restroom structure will take the place of the existing concession stand. There'll be three restrooms for men and three restrooms for females, and both of them will be handicap accessible. The middle field, the baseball field, will be expanded to allow for multipurpose use. It will be completely synthetic turf. The brown areas of the field are actually synthetic turf, just in a different color. The outfield will be able to support everything from soccer to lacrosse to field hockey. And then finally, on the western portion of the site, softball is at its rightful home back behind Situate High School, and that field is also expanded to accommodate multipurpose use. Other uses on that field will include football, lacrosse, and field hockey. All three of the fields, all three of the athletic or active recreational nodes on this site, will be lit with state-of-the-art LED, energy-efficient sports lighting systems. The existing sports lighting system at the baseball field will be relocated. It was generously donated by the Reedy Family Foundation about six, seven years ago, and we are relocating those poles and fixtures to the back field, the back existing natural grass field beyond the softball field. We didn't want to send those to the landfill or recycling at this point in time because the age of those lights is still so young. Again, all fields will be synthetic turf. The passive recreation component of this site is also something that I would like to touch on quickly. Going around, all the fields will be a walking trail. The walking trail will change in elevation and topography, creating intimate and unique athletic venues, spectating venues for people to watch the games from different vantage points in and around the site. Just to touch a little bit on synthetic turf, the product that we're proposing onsite, it is a polyethylene-fibered carpet. So the fibers, the green fibers of the turf are made of polyethylene. They're tufted into geotextile backing that is coated with polyurethane to hold the fibers in place. In between all of the fibers is a mixture of sand and rubber infill. The sand and rubber provide firm stability for underneath athlete shoes, but it also provides resiliency to give that natural grass feel. And again, I know you can't read this.
Do you need more time? Motion to give the speaker another two minutes. Moved, seconded. Discussion to be done. All those in favor of an additional two minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So crumb rubber. I know that's been a topic of conversation in town. Crumb rubber infill is basically ground-up car tires. For this project, we have specified passenger vehicle tires instead of tractor-trailer tires. Tractor-trailer tires actually have a higher heavy metal content in them. But the thing about crumb rubber tires is they're a durable product. They work well in synthetic fields across the United States. There's over twelve thousand infill synthetic turf fields in the United States. Ninety-eight percent of them utilize crumb rubber and sand infill. If you're concerned about potential health issues, I'm here to tell you that you shouldn't be. There's over ninety peer-reviewed, scientific, and published reports and studies that have been performed at the state level, at the governmental level for the United States, international governmental agencies have performed these reports, and independent laboratories have also performed these reports. All ninety of them find that there is no link or elevated risk for human health and safety. On the other hand, there are zero published scientific reports that are peer-reviewed that state the opposite. There are also a number of institutions in New England that have done their due diligence on this subject. Amherst College, Babson College, Boston University, Harvard University, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, Northeastern, the list goes on and on, have all done their research into this product, have affirmed that there is no elevated risk, and have decided to install them on their campuses.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure there'll be questions about that, and we can talk about it a little bit more later. Real quick on the funding mechanism. So the total project cost is estimated at ten point two million dollars. Design and engineering was approved at last year's town meeting for four hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred, I believe, for a total budgeted cost of just north of ten point five million dollars. CPC funding took care of the four hundred and eighteen last year at town meeting. CPC's unrestricted fund is looking for about four million tonight. Article twelve has also got an additional one point two million, and then there'll be some CPC debt that we can answer any questions if you have any questions on the debt that they're looking to take on. And then finally...
No, sum up, please.
Finally, Article three, which we're talking about right now, the one point six million from capital, and then an additional two hundred and fifty thousand from grants and donations. With that, thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
First, the fire chief has informed me that it's a fire code violation for people to be standing in front of the fire doors at the back of the hall. If you wish to be in the room, kindly find a seat or step outside. Would rather have you come in and sit down and be comfortable. Thank you, Chief, for drawing that to our attention. And then the next procedural issue is you have voted to combine the discussion and the voting on this for the two particular items. One thing that we don't have on the floor yet is the funding motion for the CPC part of it, which Chairman Danahue is going to offer. Before he offers it, just so you understand, there will be two separate funding motions on this, roughly half of the funds with each motion, and they will each be voted separately, but we want to have both of them on the floor at this time. Chairman Danahue.
All right. Bear with me again. I've just got to read again the motion here. I move the town here and act on recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee on fiscal year 2020 community preservation budget in pursuant to Mash General Law's forty B to appropriate and reserve the sums of money as indicated below to meet the administrative... For the acquisition, I guess you could... no, hold on. For the creation, acquisition, and preservation of fields. Any amount of eight million three hundred thousand dollars for recreational purposes athletic field renovation project, four million dollars from the undesignated fund balance, one million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the fiscal 2020 community preservation estimated revenues, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow three million eighty thousand dollars in accordance with Mash General Law's forty-four B and Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, and any other enabling authority and further that the Selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources, and that the said Selectmen were hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, all the two funding motions that are necessary for this are now properly on the floor. From the advisory committee, Mr. Westore was going to give a presentation on this particular item and the committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was kind of hoping you guys were all here for the gristmill, but I'm guessing we're not. So anyways, I'll go quickly over the fields portion of it. I think everybody knows the track's not compliant. You can't hold meets there. It's twenty years old. The stands are not ADA compliant. There's no softball. And I'm sure most of the seven hundred people that don't typically come to these meetings realize there's no practice fields. Even the fields we have, they're just overused. It's not that DPW's not doing a good job keeping up with them. It's just not feasible. If every weekend somebody's on the field, it's just going to get worn out. They've come past the point where we need another solution. We don't seem to have a ton of land, so building a lot of fields so we could then let the fields we do have rest for a year or two, it's not going to happen. We'd end up having to rent fields or go somewhere else, and that's just going to cost more money. These new fields would be like adding six new fields because they're turf and they can be used. So instead of being short sixteen, we're adding six new fields. So as far as the fields portion, I think Mark covered it, but in general, that's the short portion. Now, the funding portion. People ask questions, okay, where are we getting all this money from? Well, first of all, CPC already has four million dollars just sitting there, not allocated to any funds. Okay? So they're going to use those four million dollars funds that you guys have all paid into waiting for some type of project. Okay? The other one point two-two million is going to be coming in July. For those of you guys that don't know, every year CPC gets an influx of money. That money is typically... last year, let's just go with last year, because I don't want to say typical. Last year was about one point five million dollars. So every year, the kitty's getting in one point five million dollars. Now, that doesn't include any state match, because those of you that are aware of CPC, at the beginning, we used to get a ton for state match. I don't even know if it was... I think it was higher than seventy-five percent. Every year is going down. As more and more communities join CPC, the match is going down. So to be safe, and we want to make sure if we are then going to go borrow money, can we pay it back? What happens if the state match goes away to zero? Can we fund it? Yes, we can. It also doesn't take into consideration any investment income we have. When you have money sitting around, it's not just getting in the checking account making twenty basis points, right? They put it in to try to make some money. It's not like they're going to buy stocks, but you do have investment income. None of that was used to run the scenario to see if we could pay this money back. Okay? They also ran the numbers based on, right now, you guys pay three percent into CPC. If for some reason somebody dominates or wants to change it to one and a half percent, say, we can still fund this debt. Okay? Now, what's the question? Is this going to cripple everything else and nobody gets CPC? That's not the case. How CPC works is if we just take the one point five million that we got in last year, you have to allocate ten percent to certain budgets. So ten percent goes to historical. So every year, no matter what, based on that one point five, whether we have debt or not debt, historical's getting a hundred and fifty grand in, let's call it, their bucket. Same thing for housing. Every year, housing's getting another hundred and fifty. Same thing for open space. Okay? So if we look at where those buckets are now, right now, historical's got a million dollars already in cash. And I don't even think that's counting the hundred and fifty. I didn't have time to go back and check it. But historical, you'll see the projects. It's a gristmill. It's to do some archives. It's to do, you know, valuable things, but they don't cost a million bucks. So they're not... I mean, as far as historical's concerned, it's going to be a while before they would ever run out of money if they didn't get any new money in. Housing right now, housing right now has two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Well, that's because we already allocated a million dollars, not from the housing account, but from the undesignated CPC account, and took the money that was in housing, which is probably nine hundred thousand. So they have one point nine million dollars sitting in a kitty waiting for a project, the Loss of Green Project, which either has or has not happened. If that doesn't happen, it goes back into the housing trust. So they're working on a project already. I don't know if they have the capacity to then take on a huge another project. So basically, what I'm saying is it's not going to stop CPC. CPC's still going to be funded and still going to go forward. And the biggest thing is if we actually take that one point five million dollars, we pay out every bucket. There's your ten percent. You're also going to put five percent away for administrative costs. You could pay off the three million bucks in three years. In three years, you could pay off the three million bucks, assuming everything stayed the same, and everybody would still have all their money in their bucket. So as far as advisory board is concerned, we know we need fields. This way, we can pay for fields, and your taxes aren't going up. When's the last time somebody could build all kinds of fields and not charge you an increase in taxes? I don't know of any. And then if people are concerned about borrowing, eighty-nine towns have borrowed money against CPC. Some towns have borrowed as much as twenty-two million. And predominantly, most of the borrowing that was done, and this is not official, I scanned the eighty-nine things or whatever else, and quick look at it, most of them were for track and fields or sports. You know, they ran the gamut from fifty grand to twenty-two million. It's not unusual to borrow. People do it all the time. Has Situate done it? No. Doesn't mean it's not right, and doesn't mean it's something we shouldn't do. We've done the numbers. We can pay it back. We can pay it back a heck of a lot faster than the debt if we so choose. I don't think you should, because if you're borrowing money for so cheap, you shouldn't pay it back, but that's just me, total different issue. But as far as advisory's concerned, we're behind the project a hundred percent, and I hope the seven hundred and nineteen of you are as well. Thanks.
Discussion from the floor. Discussion from the floor. Lady at the center mic.
Beverly Westerveld, 12 Habview Road.
Could you use the microphone, ma'am? We can't hear you.
Okay, is that better?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Testing, okay. Beverly Westerveld, 12 Habview Road.
Ma'am.
I have a question about maintenance. Reading, just a little line in the advisory book, it said, "maintenance free."
To answer the question.
The fields are not maintenance free, there is some maintenance that goes along with them. It is significantly less than is required on natural grass fields. However, we've also included in the project for whoever the turf installer and manufacturer is to come back twice on an annual basis to perform an aggressive maintenance on the field. That will give us two things. It'll have the actual manufacturer working on the field and making sure that things are up to snuff, and secondly, it also protects the town should there need to be a warranty claim in, say, year six of the warranty. They're warranted for eight years. If we need to make a warranty claim in year six, the turf manufacturer can't turn around and look at the town and say, hey, you haven't been maintaining your fields appropriately, because they're the ones that have been doing it. It's just another way of building in some added insurance into, into the.
Now, according to Cornell's website, the life of a field is eight to 10 years. Does that mean eight years from now you'll be back for another $4 million, or 8 million, $10 million?
No. Cornell is typically right, I went there, but in this case, I'd like to, I'd like to argue with them a little bit. I typically tell all of my clients that you should plan on 10 to 12 years. We have clients that have fields in the ground for over 15 years and they're still performing well. The cost for resurfacing is just the carpet itself. So the existing carpet out there will get chopped, assuming everything passes, and we start work out there, it'll get chopped up and sent off to be completely recycled. These fields are recyclable, all right? So at the end of these, the new field's useful life, the same thing will happen. They'll be cut up, sent off for recycling, and then a new carpet will be installed, just the carpet.
Now, according to, again, Cornell, each field has to be groomed before each game. The sweeping and dragging should be once a month or once a week, depending on use. Keep the five carpet riders in upright position. You have to use a leaf or vacuum blower to remove debris like sunflower seeds after each game. Has to be cleaned with special solvents and cleansers after each game. Retreated with antimicrobial products to remove bacterial growth, weekly to monthly, and should be, have troubleshooting done for common problems and minor repairs frequently. And snow during the winter should be removed. Also, what happens when the rain hits it? Does it get, does it run off into a pool, or does it just stick there until it gets evaporated?
The water moves, were you done? I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Were you done?
Go ahead, answer a question.
I think I'm done. Well, yes, we can establish policies that prohibit the use of chewing gum, sunflowers, sunflower seeds, and chewing tobacco while you're on the field.
Chewing tobacco, absolutely. Sunflower seeds and gum are also on the list of no-nos for synthetic turf. It'll be posted on each field, the appropriate uses for the fields. The water, in terms of your drainage, every drop of water that hits the surfaces of the field moves directly through it. These fields are designed to drain at up to 10 inches an hour. So I say if it's raining too hard for those fields to drain, then we're all building arcs rather than trying to play on the fields. All the water moves down through into a stone base and it's collected, and then sent out through a stormwater drainage system at existing rates and flows. So we're not impacting any of the wetlands or, or anything downstream. In terms of the maintenance requirements that you've touched on, some of them are accurate, some of them are not. The, in terms of grooming, it doesn't need to be daily, it's typically once every two weeks, which is a lot less than the fields are currently being maintained in terms of mowing. And that's really just a drag behind brush. You do need to remove leaves from the surface, and all the equipment for maintenance is included in the 10.2 million. The last thing I'd like to touch on is the need to treat these fields with antimicrobial sprays. Completely false. These fields are not conducive habitats for the growth of bacteria. The only thing that they need is Mother Nature to rain on them. If there is an occasion where someone gets sick, vomits on the field, or gets cut, you treat it the same way you would treat that type of situation on a gymnasium floor.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Dennis Maher, 90 Turner Road. And this is the first time, Mr. Moderator, that the CPC, all of those people on the CPC, Mr. Moderator, are political appointees. None of them are elected to that, and now they're going to be borrowing our money, Mr. Moderator. Why hasn't the executive branch not stepped up and given a debt exclusion so we can vote here tonight and then vote again in May at the town election, where we can have both opportunities for everybody here, and then go back home and think about it, and then have a private ballot, a secret ballot, where we can vote without anybody having any fear of reprisals? The Board of Selectmen should be offering this, we should not be taking this money from the CPC, that is a slush fund, Mr. Moderator, it can be abolished at any time, and then where are we going to be with that, with those millions of dollars out there? It's up to the Board of Selectmen to do this type of bonding, this type of borrowing. I say we do not allow this to happen. Give us the right to vote now, give us the right to vote in May, and let us do this the proper way. Let's not have the CPC start running our government. They are not elected officials, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen are, and they're the ones who should be doing this. Thank you very much.
Speaker to my right.
Thank you. Lisa Bertola, 52 Elm Street. I have a comment and a question. I am not concerned about health issues with regard to the turf, but I am concerned about environmental issues. Anytime you're covering land with a petroleum-based substance, we should be concerned. And I'm just curious, greenscapes, there's a lot of organizations, environmental organizations that do not support the use of the turf. I won't get into the details, but they're organizations that we all know and respect locally. So I won't get into that any further, but did this project ever consider superseding with, with grass seed and the cost implications, the reduced cost implications of using grass and not using turf? Was that ever even in the plans or the project to begin with?
To answer the question.
So, yes, we, we did look at using natural grass on some of the fields. Unfortunately, we cannot, the amount of demand that we place on fields in town, the fields will not survive. Natural grass fields have a finite amount of hours that you can place on them over the course of a year. What the synthetic turf fields do is allow us to really create three fields that are the workhorse for the town. In turn, that allows us to start to allow other fields in town, Flannery, Central, Cudworth, to properly rest and rejuvenate. So it's really taking the, the heavy amount of use and demand in order to really allow our other natural grass fields to survive.
Okay, so what, was there actually a, a cost projection without turf?
So, no. We, we did look at a cost-benefit analysis. If you look at cost per use, synthetic turf is without a doubt lower than any type of natural grass system that you would look to install. Again, natural grass, you know, it's a great product. It's, it's something in an ideal situation that anyone would prefer. We are just so far beyond an ideal situation here in Situate that it's just not a viable option.
It's not convincing that it was actually vetted as a viable alternative to look at grass seeding. There's lots of organic solutions to hyperseeding and superseding grass. Fenway, Fenway Park uses it. The World Soccer Federation does not endorse using turf. I, it, it seems suspect to me that it was properly vetted from an environmental standpoint with and without turf.
From an environmental? There's no question before you.
And I fully support the use of this project. I think it's a wonderful project. It's the turf that is a real issue. I don't think we should go forward with turf.
Are you done, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Speaker to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. My issue is that the financing of the borrowing has not been fully explained to this group. It's obvious that if we borrow the $4 million and we can pay it off in three years, but is that the intent? Or is the intent to use a longer term so that we have money around to do other CPC projects, such as, I think, the one we voted on last year at First Cliff in the harbor there, buying the couple, a couple of pieces of property and making them conservation land so that we have flexibility? So I just, I'm asking what the term that we're looking at to borrow is, and if anybody has gone through that yet, because it's hard to borrow unless you know the terms and conditions of your bank, bank loan.
To answer the question, the town administrator.
It depends. So what's going to happen is we will do a temporary borrowing during the construction. When the project is finished, we will then look at what the market is telling us for the cost of borrowing money. The maximum allowable for this would be 15 years. We may go less, we may go more, we may pay it off. It's really going to depend on what that interest rate is at the time we decide to go to permanent financing. But the, the plan would be to do the long-term financing over the 15 years, so that the money would be available on an annual basis and lower that cost on an annual basis to the CPC. But it's going to depend upon what the market looks like probably two years from now.
All right, so just to wrap that up, I meant that when we're looking to pay off 300 some odd thousand dollars a year and leaving the other $1 million available for CPC to do other things. And I don't have a calculator with me, so that's just a rough guess that what I'm looking at. So, and, and that's, that's what I wanted to know, because it's hard to vote on anything unless you know the financing that you're looking towards.
Gentlemen at the center mic.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Habview Road. At previous town meetings, I've learned that CPC articles are to be voted on as a whole, cannot be modified during the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, they can be, they can be dissected in the manner that we've done it.
I was told that the article could not be modified.
Who told you that?
The moderator. It was a yes-no vote.
Oh, boy. Bernie, oh, this will sound like a real lawyer answer, but okay, well, you're stuck with it. Yes and no. Did I steal John's line? Yes and no. You can't change the actual dollar amount in the CPC article, and that's not what's happening here. What's happening here is that the order that is being taken up in is being changed, which is a very different thing. So, for example, had the motion been to, and I'm just going to use round numbers, had the motion been, I move to reduce the amount taken from CPC from 4 million to 2 million, or I move to increase it from 4 million to 10 million, either of those would have been out of order, because you're right, that number is fixed, that can't be changed. But what we're doing right now is not changing the actual dollar amount, we're just changing the order in which it's being considered by the meeting so that people could hear the entire presentation at the time that they would be voting on the two different funding sources.
So what happens if, if the meeting here decides that turf should not go along and the other articles, the other items in Article 12 are going along? We're changing the dollar amount?
Well, the same thing that would have happened had we voted them an hour or two apart in time. The temporal part of it, putting the things together and voting them or considering them at the same time, doesn't affect the difficulty that may arise, and I won't say will arise, if, say, one of the funding sources is passed and the other one is defeated. Obviously, it seems, and I'll let the experts discuss the consequences, but it seems to this observer that this is a project that calls for $8 million, half of it's in one, half of it's in another pocket, and if you only vote to approve one pocket, then you probably can't go, well, you have a financial issue. How that gets solved?
Article 12 contains a number of items that I'm sure everybody's in favor of, but not everybody's in favor of the turf. So we're going to split Article 12 up, and we're going to change the dollar amount possibly.
We will have to make an adjustment in the overall motion for Article 12 when we get to it to reflect whatever action that's taken right now. But in terms of the financial consequence, the procedural consequence, there isn't any. All you're really talking about now is whether it's a good policy to purchase this field as it is being presented to you.
Thank you.
Speaker to my right.
Good evening. Michael Clark, 103 Starkbridge Road. I guess my concern is in looking at the numbers that somehow don't seem to be adding up to Help me out here if I get something wrong, okay? So we have a $10.3 million project, correct? We're looking to use 8.3 in CPC funds, correct? Okay? So when I look at the town warrant, it indicates on page 23 that the track is not a CPC fundable item. That's 1.9 million. That's in, in the warrant article. And then, when you look at the construction estimates that were presented tonight and in the various meetings, which I did not have the opportunity to attend because of work, but I did watch them on, on YouTube, the three line items for the turf add up to almost $2.5 million. The artificial turf is not a reimbursable item. And then, there's also, I believe, that the stands are not reimbursable item. So it sounds like to me that we're asking for over $2.5 million of CPC money that by the reg, by the, actually by the legislative, the legislature can't be used, and it makes this whole kind of application point moot. So could you please clarify that?
You know, I think what I may do. What, what I'm going to do is to ask Madam Town Council to offer a legal opinion as to the legality of the, I'll call it the two-pocket funding system, and whether it violates the Community Preservation Act. Well, go tell them that. Madam Town Council.
I do not believe it violates it.
Okay.
I think, they couldn't hear you. To point the mic down so that they can.
I don't think there's a problem with the motions and with the way that they're doing the funding.
Can you, could somebody actually address this with some detail? Because I'm, I'm serious here, I'm, I believe we need the fields, okay? My, my children have played on the existing turf. I know the track is in horrible shape, I know we need a softball field, that we appropriated money for once, and then we disappropriated it because we decided, hey, let's build a junior high school, okay? So in going down through the monies that are eligible for CPC funding, it looks like we're talking about $4 million that are not, that are not eligible. we're talking about $4 million that are not eligible in the $10.3 million concept. And, you know, instead of a blanket statement saying that I don't have a problem with that because this could lead to issues later on, it could go to court, it could be, you know, it just could be an issue. So I want to be, from my perspective, I'd like to be sure the money is being allocated properly.
Okay. I'm Gary Meyerson. I'm chairman of CPC. I'll try to answer as many of your questions as possible.
I'm one of your new members.
Sorry?
I am one of your new members. CPC.
Okay, gentlemen.
Wrong CPC.
Mr. Clark, no banter.
Sorry.
Sir, kindly answer the questions.
Okay, so as far as the stands are concerned, they are eligible for CPC funding. I don't know where you read that, but they are eligible. The only part, the only stand that CPC is not going to pay for is the visitor stands all the way on the right, and so those were taken out of the project for now, okay? I don't know where you got the $1.9 million from at all.
It's in the warrant at page 23. Forgot the track.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Back up. Mr. Clark has a question. We're going to get it answered.
So, Michael, the amount that we have is, we had previously from 2017, the annual town meeting, we had $445,000. You add that to the 1.6 as well as the 8.3, and that gets you your number. So that's the $445,000 is what you're trying to find out about. We already previously authorized it.
Sorry. I just want to, I just go through the simple math again. In your warrant article on page 23, it says $1.9 million is not able to be funded through CPC. It's not an eligible expense. The legislation itself says synthetic fields are not an eligible expense. Looking at the cost estimate provided by the committee, those three line items add up to $2.5 million for the turf itself. So that's over $4 million and is well, it's $2 million into the CPC funds.
Could I take a crack at this, Mr. Chairman? My understanding of this is, I'm sure, not as great as those who are involved in it, but it seems to me that the costs were allocated into the two different pockets because the CPC money couldn't be used to pay for some of the stuff, and so the stuff that the CPC money couldn't pay for had to be paid for by borrowing. So I think that's the reason why we've got two different votes.
I understand why we have two different votes. What I'm saying is that we, it appears based on the information presented tonight, that we're trying to fund $4.2 million worth of non-eligible cost.
Okay, let's put that as a straightforward question, and then I'll have to move on to another speaker. Mr. Danny here, or Mr. Vignani, can you answer the gentleman's question as to the possible ineligibility of funding for the costs? Or Gary?
Got it. So the ineligible cost is roughly 1.6 million, not 4. whatever you just said. It's 1.6 million.
Hey, I know who he is.
And that's related to the turf.
Gary, stop.
Sorry.
First of all, I'm going to throw you out in a New York minute if I hear shouting out from the crowd. I'm letting people speak according to the order that I think they can present you with the information. If you don't like it, don't vote for me in May. Oh, guess what? I'm not running. So anyway, my point is, look, I'm trying to be a little fluid. This is a big subject, it's a lot of money. I'm just trying to get the information out there to you. Okay, sometimes somebody jumps in. I know it's not Mr. Danny. So Gary, if you can answer the gentleman's question, please answer it, because pretty soon I'm going to have to move on to another speaker, and I want the gentleman to have his answer.
Okay, they just showed me where you're referencing to. The warrant says the track cannot be funded. That's just a typo. It can be funded.
Well?
Oh, that's the advisory, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
The advisory book. Advisory.
All right. Well, Mr. Clark, it sounds like you got something there.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get anything.
No, no. Do you have one more question, or are you done?
I still want to continue on this question. We still have...
You may ask one more question, and then we're going to allow other people to speak.
So in the construction cost estimate that was prepared by the design professionals, okay? The line items for the three fields are $2.4 million and change, synthetic turf, for the synthetic turf. All right. What I'm trying to do here is make sure that we do not get into a situation where we're funding ineligible items with eligible costs.
To answer the question, town administrator.
The slide that was put up was $10.5 million, roughly. $8 million from CPC, $1.6 million in borrowing, $445,000 that's already been appropriated for the replacement of the field that's currently out there, and the other $400,000 and change that's already been appropriated for the design and the administration. That gets you to your $10.5 million. The only thing that is ineligible is the actual turf and some smaller items. The visitor stands are not eligible because they are movable. The regular set of stands are completely eligible for this funding. So there is sufficient funds, there are sufficient funds to cover the ineligible portions of this project that the CPC cannot fund. So you got all the math now? I'm bad at it.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me, because it's 2.5 minus 10.5, that's 8 million.
Well, I don't know where the 2.5 is coming from.
Turned across that, turned...
But we have sufficient funds to cover the non-CPC portions.
I'm still confused, but thank you.
Hey, sir, center mic. Glasses. No, you can wait for shouting out in the middle of the line.
William Tibbetts.
You're out of order. Gentlemen to my left.
Jeff Burns, 10 Cornerstone Lane. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In despair of candor, I'll first say that I'm in full support of this article and the CPC and its mission. They do a wonderful job. This is what we pay 3% a year for. My question is with respect to the funding and why it's been broken down as it has. As of, per our comprehensive annual financial report from 6/30/18, the CPC had a net balance of $9.795 million, $9.488 of which was held in cash and cash equivalents. It's a lot of money. And it specifically goes on to say that, you know, state match funds or any investment income, as Mr. Westward pointed out, is not included in the report here. My question really is why the borrowing at all? Why are we not appropriating the 3.08 from CPC funds for the use of this, still leaving them with a net $3 million? $1.488 was the net taken in '18. That was a net increase of 906K year over year. So there's ample funds, I'm just curious why.
The simple answer is a lot of those funds are restricted.
To answer the question, the town administrator.
A lot of those funds are restricted. They're in the buckets for affordable housing, they're in the buckets for open space, they're in different buckets, so they can't be used for this. So there is not sufficient cash in the correct funds to just pay this with cash. That's why we have to borrow the money.
Thank you.
Gentleman to my right.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road. Mr. Moderator, there's only one other issue in this town that I can think of that's been kicked around for as long as this one has, and I'm not going to bring that up now because we'll discuss it May 13th. But I've given this article a lot of thought. I was very undecided on it up until fairly recently. I attended the session that Mr. Novak ran about a week ago. There was a lot of very detailed, factual, scientific information that was given, which I think supported the viability of this project. I think the potential risks are minimal, if even existing at all. I would urge the members of this body to show up on May 13th also, but I would also urge you tonight to vote this article now. This is an issue that needs to be taken care of now. Let's vote it in.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm the liaison, for the Sleccman's liaison to both recreation and to CPC, so I've been in many, many, many meetings that discuss this topic. And I would say many, if not all of them, I was the only one questioning the project. But I wasn't questioning because of the design. We all saw it's a beautiful design. It embraces the town, it takes care of Title IX, it gives us more fields in our inventory, and it really gives us...
Excuse me. You're out of order. I'm not out of order, I was skipped.
Would a police officer kindly come forward? Wait right there.
Am I under arrest or am I asked to leave?
Sergeant Bates.
Am I under arrest or...
Under Chapter 39, Section 17, I maintain the rules of order at this meeting. I am asking you to be in order. Will you be in order?
Yes, sir.
Officers, you may return to your posts. The speaker may continue.
Yeah, I forgot where I was. So I was saying, the design of the fields are great. We're getting more fields, Title IX is taken care of, and we're going to be able to replenish our grass fields and use them better. The health issues, I think we all initially were concerned with the health issues. You know, first I used my eye test. We've had a turf field for 15 years. Every community around us has a turf field, every state has a turf field. You know, it just seems like if there was an issue with that, then it would have come that way and we would have been aware of it. Then, of course, I went and asked Google, and turf fields were actually invented back in the 1960s, so they've been around for about 50 years, and there's about 11,000 of them in the United States right now. But then that got wrapped up when I went to the presentations, and then an expert on the metal conditions of the fields, and they talked about report after report where there was no health concerns. So as a few people mentioned earlier, my concern was with the funding mechanism. I was concerned with the fact that we were using all of CPC savings, and I was concerned with the fact that we were going to borrow money, a lot of money, for the first time that we've ever done this. And I'm financially conservative by nature, and that kind of made me take a pause. There's a couple of things that are going to happen because if we pass this project. Number one, there's not going to be money for another large project in the near future. And number two, there'll be some other mid-sized projects that may have to be delayed for a couple of two, three years until this gets paid off. That's just the way it is. But when it came time to make my decision, I supported this article for the following reasons. Number one, we don't have another large project in line waiting to happen. It's not there. Number two, improving the fields in this town has been a priority for the Sleccman for at least the last five or six years, along with the senior senator that Mr. Price said. So we're getting, you know, we're taking care of an important issue in town. Number three, CPC funds will replenish themselves. We put about $2 million a year into CPC, and over time it will grow just like it grew to this level. And the biggest one for me was, number four, I couldn't come up with another way to fund this project without imposing an override on everybody in this room, including myself. And I didn't want to raise the taxes for everybody to do this. So just to wrap it up, we're being able to take care of a priority in this town without raising taxes and without postponing some of the project that's behind it. So for that reason, I voted in support of this project.
Here's the speaking order. Lady to my left, the gentleman behind Mr. Hunt, the lady to my right. Ma'am.
Lisa Rafferty, 91 Williamsburg Lane. I move the question.
I'm not going to accept that motion because I want to give this gentleman a chance to have his say. I will take the motion up after the lady, oh, she's left. Okay, we'll take up your motion once this gentleman's had his speech. Sir.
Thank you. William Tibbetts, 79 Jericho Road. I'm humbled and honored for you to let me speak at this meeting. Thank you.
To your right.
Who am I addressing? I don't even know your name, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm the town moderator.
Town moderator, your name is, sir?
Richard Bowen.
Richard Bowen. Okay, thank you. William Tibbetts, pleasure to meet you, sir.
I know you. How do you do?
So one of the things that was mentioned a lot was it needed to be addressed.
Bill, move up to the mic, they can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. One of the things that was needed was, you kept mentioning that the fields needed to be addressed. I was wondering what the urgency was.
Anyone who answers the question as to the urgency.
It was mentioned seven times that it needed to be addressed. And it was also stated, you can't continue to work with natural grass. I want to know why you couldn't continue to work with the natural grass. And the 1.4 miles for the softball team has been going on forever, and I think the kids kind of enjoy that ride sometimes, from my experience. And then there's, you said that the state of the fields was deplorable, and what does that say about our town right now if the state of the fields is deplorable?
To answer Mr. Tibbetts' question.
Mr. Tibbetts, fields have been a necessity for a number of years. We actually need more fields than what we have. The current fields behind us right now, between the football field, lacrosse field, soccer field, it's deteriorated, needs to be replaced. The track that was put in there, I'm not sure if it was in the presentation, it's two feet higher on one end than the other. It was actually put in backwards when they first put it in, early 2000s. The press box is not accessible whatsoever. People have to climb up on ladders to get to the top of it. It's not handicap accessible. You go to the main bleachers, the accessible component or area of it, it's all broken down, we've got it cordoned off. There's no bathrooms unless you come in and this is open. If it's not open and you're doing it during the weekends during the summer, you'll be lucky if you can get to the Jiffy John or the Porta Johnny before it's actually been sitting there for a whole week in the sun. You've got the baseball field that frankly, last summer, or actually not last summer, last fall, winter, the dugout blew over. The field actually rises as it goes up in the back. It has a fence around it, so you can't use it for multiple purposes.
I understand the hardships.
There are other issues when you're dealing with the girls softball, frankly, Title IX, which is unfair, that our girls, our young women, our women have to go down when frankly, they should be on the campus. You've got the football...
Oh. Excellent.
You've got a football JV field that frankly is a dirt patch that is uneven, that they use for, not only for football or JV or freshmen, they use it for soccer, they use it for lacrosse, they use it for ultimate frisbee. JV fields is in terrible disrepair.
John, I can see Bill's got a question, so let him get it.
I agree with everything you're saying. I think the kids are our future, and I think we need to look out for them. I was wondering if you put this out to bid, or how the company was found, and if we had an open bid with other contractors? I know I put in fields like that, and so does my father, all over the state. I'm wondering if we got different bids, or if we just went and got a price, and then, could you answer that, please?
If you can answer the question.
For the fields themselves, you're talking about the arc?
The $10.3 million for the field.
The bids are out right now. You can go apply if you'd like. The bids, the bids are out right now. You're free to apply for them. They have not been selected.
Okay, so it's going to be an open bid?
It is open bid. That's why I'm saying you can apply right now. It's open for anybody who wants to design and build, or not design, but who wants to build it.
I'm kind of confused because Mr. Novak, Brian Novak, sir, from Dedham, in your company is what again, sir?
Mr. Novak, to answer the question.
So he was the one, so you're the one...
Mr. Novak's firm was selected through a competitive bid process to design the fields, which has been done. He has also prepared, he has also prepared the bid package for the construction of those fields. That bid package has been advertised currently and is on the street, and anyone who is qualified can pick up a copy of that bid package and bid on it. When we receive those bids, they will be opened publicly, they will be reviewed, and they will be awarded based upon the requirements of the Commonwealth to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Okay, great. So my next question, I didn't go to Cornell, but I'll try to keep up here. 90% of the tests were negative. What is that? What about the 10% positive tests? And have you seen the documentary about the rubber pellet fields on ESPN?
Mr. Novak.
So I stated 90 studies, peer-reviewed.
You said 90% of the studies.
No. If I did, I misspoke.
I was back there, I couldn't hear you. I was back there, I couldn't hear you then. 90 studies total?
90 studies have been performed.
Worldwide, international? You said, you said international?
International as well, yep.
What does that have to do with the testing and situating the rubber pellets? I'm just curious.
So the European Union, the Netherlands, they've all tested synthetic turf field with chrome rubber infill. Very extensive studies that have been published, peer-reviewed, that find there's no link with any kind of health issue.
Okay. There's no elevated risks with the grass?
Zero. It's actually the same. That's what the studies say.
So there's same amount of risk getting cancer from the, the grass as there is the rubber pellets?
Yep.
I hadn't heard that, I'm sorry. I don't want to take up any more time and I hope I wasn't.
Lady to my right.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. I move the question.
A motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. I will attempt a voice vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion and terminating debates signify by saying aye. All those opposed? I declare it passes by a two-thirds majority. Do any seven people wish to challenge my determination? No. Okay. So actually, what we've done is we've moved two questions. One was originally under 3D. And you, I'm sure you remember from Mr. Danny, his motion. That was, well, I'm sorry, I'll just have to read it to you. I move that the, to authorize the board of selectmen to borrow 1.6 million for the purpose of athletic field renovation project at the high school and further, the Selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, and donations, et cetera. That is the first motion that's on the table. Anybody disagree with that? No? Speak now or it's over. Okay. Passage of that motion will require a two-thirds vote. Honest to goodness, I'll try it on a voice vote. I probably will regret it on Facebook later. But that's life in the fast lane. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? I determine that it passes by a two-thirds vote. If any seven people wish to challenge my determination, you may rise now and we will take a hand-counted vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We will take a hand-counted vote. Tellers, kindly take your places. Order, please. Order. Are the tellers ready? I don't hear a no. If you are standing in a doorway or against the back wall, your vote will not be counted. Tellers, take note. Only people who are seated will be counted. You two gentlemen standing in the back, sit or don't be counted. Your call. Don't complain later. Come on, Mr. Hunt. I know you want to vote. Let's go. All those in favor of the motion signify by, no, sorry. All those who are in favor of the motion kindly raise your voting card. You all set there, Allison? I still see hands up back there. Have these folks been counted? All right. Come on, Chris. Don't take your shoes off to count. Let's go. I think you're all set there, sir. Okay, tellers, are you ready? No, these were the yeses. Right rear bleacher.
136.
136. Right front bleacher.
79, 79.
79. Right rear floor.
31, 31.
31. Right center floor.
23.
23. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. Thank you, Penny. Left rear bleacher.
116.
116. Left front bleacher.
43.
43. Left rear floor. 41. Left center floor.
29, 29.
29. Thank you. Left front floor includes moderator, no it doesn't, clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
18.
18. All right. All those opposed kindly raise your voting cards. No Chicago voting, only vote once. We all set? Okay. We're all set. You can put your cards down. Right rear bleacher.
23.
23?
Yep.
Thanks, Chris. Right front bleacher.
14, 14.
Thank you, Allison. 14. Right rear floor.
17, 17.
17. Right center floor.
18, 18.
18. Right front floor, including the advisory committee and school committee. Three. Left rear bleacher. 14. 14. Left front bleacher.
3.
Three. Left rear floor. Nine. Left center floor.
10.
10. Left front floor includes clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
2.
2. By a vote of 544 in the affirmative and 113 in the negative, the motion passes. We now have to address the second motion. Which was approximately for recreational purposes, athletic field renovation project 4 million from undated funded fund balance, 1,220,000 from FY 2020 Community Preservation Estimated Revenues, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow 3,800,000 in accordance with applicable law, and further, that the selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, and donations, et cetera. Approval of this motion will require a two-thirds vote. I will dispense with the voice vote since, if you wanted a counted vote on that last one, well, you probably want a counted vote again. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your voting card. Come on, guys. Quiet while they're counting. Save the jokes for Jamie's. All right. All right. Just above done back there, Tom? Yeah, he's done. Okay. Right rear bleacher. Chris?
139.
139?
Yep.
Right front bleacher.
79, 79.
79. Right rear floor.
31, 31.
31. Right center floor.
23.
23. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. 28. Left rear bleacher. 117. Left front bleacher.
42.
42. Left rear floor. 41. Left center floor.
25, 25.
25. Left front floor includes clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
22.
22. All right. All those opposed kindly raise your voting card. Looks like we're all set. Right rear bleacher.
18.
18. Thank you, Chris. Right front bleacher.
13, 13.
13. Right rear floor. 12. Right center floor.
15, 15.
15. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. Three. Left rear bleacher.
14.
14. Left front bleacher.
1.
Thank you, Peter. Left rear floor. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it. Seven? Seven. Left center floor.
Six.
Six. Left front floor includes clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
Two.
Two. All right. By a vote of 547 in the affirmative to 91 in the negative, the motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I got a point of order?
Yes, sir.
What are the rules on calling?
Please identify yourself.
Michael Westdoor, 44 Amy's Way. When can, when and what are the rules in calling an article back? Is it within three? Is it within the whole evening?
Are you talking about reconsideration?
Reconsideration, yes.
Well, I think you'd probably want to get at least one article between you and the motion for reconsideration.
No, no, I don't want it to be reconsidered. I'm saying, can anybody reconsider it the whole evening?
Sure.
So at any point, somebody could recall it?
Yes. But not tomorrow night, which we seem to be heading for.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. It pains me to say this, but we return to Article 3. The next held item was F. And hey, look, if you're going to leave, have the courtesy of leaving quietly. Thank you. Ma'am.
Tracy Kitty, Sevenail Wife Lane.
Tracy, I can't really hear you.
Sevenail Wife Lane.
Hold on half a second. Let's give the early leavers a second to go so we can hear what you have to say. Go ahead, please.
I don't know if this would go in this line item, but as far as security for public facilities, would a school be considered a public facility? So my concern is, I've been a substitute teacher for many years and when they have lockdown drills at Cushing School, they cannot lock the doors from the inside of the classroom. And if you're a substitute, you can't lock the door at all because you don't have a key. So I just feel like it's, in this day and age where we had a real lockdown, we should be able to lock the door from the inside of the classroom. Right now, if there's a lockdown, a teacher has to take a key, lock the door from the outside, and close it. She has to find the key and, you know, time is of the essence. All the other schools, you can just lock the door, shut it, and that's it. So I had brought this up years ago to Mary Augberger and she said that they were working on it. That was about six years ago. So what do you think? Could we allocate... Could we allocate some of that money to get doorknobs? We even have a teacher's husband who has offered to put them on, and that teacher asked me to bring it up tonight because she lives in Plymouth.
Okay, technically, that question isn't within the scope of Item F, which you have held. However, the superintendent has risen to address your question because it's an important question, and then we will resume with questions that relate specifically to this capital item. Superintendent?
Thank you for your question. The item that you have in front of you is the capital expenditure that's designated for security, including schools. In addition to that, though, we've been working with the town, as well as our colleagues at the Situate Police Department, to explore all of security for the schools. We've already allocated existing operating funds from the school department to begin the process of repairing, replacing, and/or adding new locks to all the individual doors each building has. That's a process that's gonna take next two years to complete, but is already underway and began last year.
Okay. Two years, we're talking about twenty-nine, you know, knobs. In the interim, we had a real lockdown, and that teacher wasn't there that day, and she was very interested to find out how they dealt with it. But, you know, I've been there for two lockdown drills, and both times I had to make special arrangements for someone to come lock me in the room with my kids. So, you know, if you're at Cushing School and your kid has a sub and there's a lockdown, you're out of luck. It's not gonna, the door's not gonna be locked.
So all of the doors that either are being replaced or have locks that are being replaced are already on the list? It's just a matter of ordering those parts and having them be installed. There are thousands of doorknobs and locks across the entire community. We've already identified the ones that need to be replaced. It is just a matter of, like, the workforce to get them all replaced and/or repaired. So it is on the radar. It's not part of this particular component of the capital plan, but it's part of the operating budget within the school department.
Okay. Can I suggest that you expedite it for Cushing School? Because does everyone here want their kids' doors to be locked during a lockdown? And the chief, the chief knows this, 'cause, 'cause I'm sure he's aware of it. But, you know, it was six years ago, I asked Mary O., and I said-
Okay, ma'am.
I'll help you out.
Ma'am, ma'am, we need to bring it back to what's actually on the table. Do you have any other questions on that, on that item? Gentlemen to my left.
I think that answer is unacceptable. Two years in this, this present day and age is wrong. This is a, this is an example of, another example of the way Situate deals with the property that they own. We put it off, and we put it off, and we put it off, and we, and we think about it, and we examine it, and we get a committee. This should be done now, and I would like to see this. I would like to see this town meeting demand that it be done now. So I move, I move that, now, there's no way to raise money to have it done now, but I think this is an example of the school board and the selectmen of putting off important repairs just because they don't like to deal with them.
Lady at the center, mic.
Andrea Hunt, sixty-six, Manlot Road. I believe this was the line item that was listed for the Hathley School roof and the fascia boards. Is that correct?
Can anyone answer the question? Go ahead, just tell.
Sorry, walked out of my shoe. Part of the funding, now I'll get off my tippy toes.
Nancy, identify yourself.
Part of the funding for this article was seven hundred and fifty dollars from Article Three-O of the April 2017 project for the Hathley Room trim and fascia, which the school committee has let us know is available to be reused for another purpose.
Can you tell me whether or not that roof has been patched or replaced so that it is no longer leaking?
This isn't the roof. This is roof trim and fascia.
Okay, so when I was down there last time, that fascia had a distinctive amount of mold on it. Do you know whether or not that mold has been cleaned off, or if they're going to take care of the mold issue?
I will defer to my colleagues at the school department for a better answer on that item.
The superintendent.
The fascia's been cleaned and/or replaced, depending on what portion of the roof needed the repair. All of it, yes.
Lady at the center, mic.
Tricia Murphy, Fifty Country Way. So it's okay for the kids to get harmed with no locks in the classrooms. I worked at Cushing School. The children could get harmed without those locks, but, you know, let them get harmed and other kids at Hathley, we don't want them to get wet. Where are our priorities? I, I lived in this town most of my life, and the buildings, I'm a witness to the school buildings, they would just run down. I mean, we're talking seventeen years. I saw a lot of unsafe things. We were told at Jenkins School for one of our first lockdown drills, when we were up on the second floor, if you know how tall Jenkins School is, they didn't come up with a solution. They said you just have to jump. That's the solutions we're getting a lot lately. Let's just build a new school. Let's demolish everything. And I'm just disappointed to say that I lived here for so long and worked here and loved it so much, but I'm, I'm back now again, and it's disappointing.
All right. There being no one else at the mics. There was a motion made on Item F. It was seconded. There's been discussion. The quantum of vote is a majority. All those in favor of Item F has moved, signified by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared passed by unanimous vote. The next item held was G. Speaker to my right.
Jennifer McMillan, thirty-four, Thomas Ave.
Could you, could you move just a bit closer to the mic? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to revote on questions three and twelve.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the-
I'd like to make a motion to revote on the two field questions, three and twelve.
Oh, I see. You're making a motion to reconsider. That motion is not in order at this point in time. Anything else on Item G? All right, there being no one at the mics. All those in favor of Item G signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared a unanimous vote. The next item held was aye. Sir.
Ben Bornstein, ninety-nine, First Parish Road. Could we just get an explanation of what the fifty thousand dollar allocation will be used for in terms of the MS-4 compliance?
Please.
Kevin Cafferty, I'm the DPW Director. The MS-4 would be used as part of complying with the illicit discharge permit. We'll actually be doing some sampling in some of our outfalls, as well as drainage updates, and just complying with the state mandate, actually, the federal mandate for the illicit discharge permit.
So it may mainly be used for just assessing the current system at this point?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It would mainly be used for assessing the current system at this point?
It's a continuation of the permit. It's done in stages to comply with the state regulations. Our next stage will be doing water sample testing in some of the outfalls, as well as mapping them and getting them all on GIS.
Okay, that's it.
Any other discussion on Item Aye? There being none, passage of Item Aye requires a majority vote, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. The last held item was Item U. Sir.
Vern Schlegel, nineteen Utility Road.
Please move a little closer to the mic.
All right, thank you. My question is in regard to the manganese in the water from well seventeen A. It was taken offline because of high manganese. It was mentioned that there is a green sand filtration system being put in. Does that actually reduce the manganese? My impression is that manganese is a dissolved metal solid, and I don't understand how a sand filtration system is going to remove that.
To answer the question, the town administrator.
Green sand is kind of a generic term, but to answer your question, we've had a temporary green sand filter on well seventeen A while we repaired the treatment plant. We went from point six pots per million, million coming out of the well to less than point oh-three pots per million running it through the temporary sand filter. It's a well-established technology. It's been around for a lot of years, and yes, it removes the manganese and the iron from the water.
Okay, thank you. Gentleman at the center, mic.
Paul Stutzman, one-ten Tac Factory, Bond Drive.
Sir.
Couple things first. Have we looked at any alternatives for, for the green sand filter plant? I know we did some studies for the, the field. Did we do any for this? Eight, eight million dollars? We didn't look at any alternatives?
To answer the question, Mr. Cafferty.
Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director. We looked at a bunch of different alternatives on how we could do it. We had an engineering firm review it, and the most plausible way to affect it was a green sand filter.
Okay, so this sand filter, is it just going to filter seventeen A? Or will it filter all the water sources in town?
Seventeen A.
Okay, is there a reason why we aren't going to filter the other water sources in town?
Seventeen A is a well that has a lot of manganese in it. As the town administrator said earlier, there's significant amounts that come out of there. It's one of our top wells. It was shut down a while back because of the quantities, quantities of manganese that were coming out. The green sand filter is a proven technology that'll supply clean water.
So what I understand is, right now, according to the advisory board, that it is offline. I know this past summer, it was online. They had a fire hose that would lead from the pump house into First Herring Brook, and that's the way we were supplying the water supply. I, I understand from an article that was on the website this past summer, the brown water is caused by manganese and also iron, and also the iron mains that are still in towns, you know, from nineteen thirty-five. But bog iron is indigenous to our, our bogs in First Herring Brook where this water flows through. So wouldn't it make sense to have the green sand filter down at the tech, at the Old Oak and Bucket Facility? I believe you have a temporary sand filter right now there that is treating some of the water? Did we look at maybe making that a permanent water, sand, green sand filter, instead of just having this one for seventeen A?
Yes, we looked at all options on that. Well seventeen A, just, you had a couple of questions there, puts out about two hundred and sixty-five gallons per minute. It's a good, solid well. It'll supply us hopefully with three hundred and eighty-one thousand gallons a day. We did have a temporary sand filter, green sand filter, that's been set up for the past three months while we shut the water treatment plant down and made necessary repairs. We're gonna have to make improvements to the treatment plant, either with redundancy or, and it's a really tight area, so there isn't necessarily the area to put a green sand filtration system at the treatment plant. So we looked at it and came up with the best solution as being at that location, treating it on the source and then going directly into the system.
So seventeen A came online recently. A stands for alternate, right, or auxiliary? The seventeen A auxiliary? So it wasn't always active. It came active, it, it produced the most right now, the most water, although it's shut down, I guess, the advisory committee said. So I don't think it was always the most highest-producing, fair to say, but right now it is, and we're gonna put a sand, eight million dollar sand filter for this one well. I, I just think we should look at options, just this one alternative. Couple other things I'd like to bring up. First, where the well is going, it's, or where this proposed green sand filter plant is going, it's in a neighborhood, a dead-end neighborhood. There'll be hazmat eighteen-wheeler trucks coming, delivering chemicals, and I wonder if you had any, we, we discussed earlier, some maybe alternatives for that? Is that still the plan?
I'm not sure of the question. Is, are you asking?
Is it still the plan to bring eighteen-wheeler hazmat trucks into a neighborhood, a dead-end neighborhood where kids are playing street hockey and, you know, is this the wisest decision, I guess? Is it still the plan?
So currently, we have an active well there, and we do take deliveries of different types of chemicals there to treat the water on that well, nothing to the extent of the green sand filter. I could ask the water superintendent to get in detail what materials would be coming in there, if that was a question.
Are hazmat materials coming in on eighteen-wheelers into this proposed green sand filter plant?
Question is, are hazmat materials coming in on eighteen-wheelers into the neighborhood?
So really, the answer's gonna be, we can either have fewer deliveries on bigger trucks or more frequent deliveries on smaller trucks. But there will be deliveries of chemicals to that site, as there is now. We deliver chemicals to the well site now on a regular basis. The size of those trucks will determine the number of trucks that have to come in. The bigger the truck, the fewer the amount of visits. Is that the question?
Well, yeah, but let me clarify something. You said the same as there is now. There's no green sand filter plant now, and I, with the research I've done, there's gonna be chlorine and other chemicals coming in that don't come in now. Is that true?
Question is, are there other chemicals being delivered to the site?
Different chemicals than are now, yes. Is that the proposal?
Sean Anderson, Water Superintendent. The only additional chemical that would go to this treatment facility that's not at other ones would be potassium permanganate. It's a dry chemical, comes in five-gallon containers, and those would be ordered probably quarterly, if not just twice a year.
Okay, that's all I have for questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentleman at the center, mic.
Ben Bornstein, ninety-nine, First Parish Road. Just, my question's twofold. One, could you just explain a little bit about the life cycle and long-term operation and maintenance for a green silk, green, green sand filter? And two, are funds appropriated for staffing and long-term maintenance of the new infrastructure in the eight-million-dollar budget item?
Give that a shot again, Sean Anderson, Water Superintendent. If it's a two-part question, could you repeat that for me?
The first part was, could you describe a little bit about the life cycle and long-term operation and maintenance of a green sand filter?
Sure, the, as we discussed earlier, the green sand filtration basically is designed to capture the iron and manganese in its media to remove it. You usually get one-hundred percent removal rates to a no detect from the labs. That sends out the water clean going into the system, no more black water. And periodically, either once a day or once every other day, the vessels are backwashed to remove those particulates, the iron and manganese. That water is stored on-site and is allowed to settle. The clear water or the supernate is sent back into the vessels and recycled and reused and sent out into the system. And then the sludge that settles down to the bottom is then hauled away to a wastewater treatment plant and disposed properly there. The life cycles of the vessels themselves depends on the- The life cycles of the vessels themselves depends on the water quality. It also depends on how often you run the well, if you run it all year long or if you run it seasonally. But typically they last between ten and fifteen years, the media within the vessels.
Okay, and then the second part was just, in the eight-million-dollar item on the budget, is long-term operation and maintenance included in that cost?
We'll have to see on the long-term maintenance if we have to increase our operating budget slightly for the added chemical usage. However, our manpower is sufficient to, and our licensing levels are more than sufficient to adequately take care of the facility.
So the maintenance would be kept, like, in-house? Who wouldn't?
To maintain it in-house, yep.
Yeah, okay, that's all. Thanks.
Gentleman to my right.
Michael Clark, one-oh-three Stockbridge Wood Road. First of all, I want to applaud the water department for installing this state-of-the-art water treatment system to aggressively address the iron and manganese problem. And then second, I'd like to move this item to the vote.
Well, as I said in the beginning, you can move the question, but not after you've made a speech. Lady to my right.
I'm gonna wait.
Gentleman to my left.
Good evening, Steve Del Rosso, seventy-seven Tac Factory, Pond. We had the opportunity of meeting with the engineers about a month or so ago. I expressed some concerns regarding the design, you know, accepting that this is in fact the best solution to solve the problem. I don't think we're necessarily arguing with that. We were looking for a seat at the table to address a list of maybe a dozen concerns with some of the design elements. We believe that the positioning of the building, the look of the building, everything is, you're gonna clear count the front of the lot, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a road that runs down. There are other ways to site the building on the land without needing any type of environmental or Conservation Commission variances. Is there an opportunity for some of our concerns to be addressed within time Bond's design that will make it a little more palatable for the butters that live there?
Sir.
Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director. Yes, we did have a public outreach meeting with everybody and it was very enlightening. We took heed of a lot of your questions. There were three main questions. One was a sound that would be generated from this. The second one was the road. And I believe the third one was the actual location of the building.
Yes.
So at that meeting, after that meeting left, I went back to Time Bond, as I said I would, and asked them to give me some different alternatives on what they can do out there on modifying the location of the building along with costs. So that's something we're still looking into. That's not off the table. I'm hoping to get something back from them within the next couple of weeks. They may have to do another boring out there, but in the meantime, we're gonna continue design. We looked at a couple of different alternatives. One of them would require rotating the building and it was gonna be extremely expensive because you would have to change things around. But we have looked at a couple of options of pushing the building back.
Okay, and again, were we, once they come up with their findings, I mean, are we just gonna be told what's gonna be done or we have another opportunity to sit down with them?
We'd have another meeting like we did before with Time Bond and go over the, go over the different alternates and see where we could go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker to my right.
Ann Burbine, ten Penny Crest Road. I move the question.
I think what we'll do, we'll take Ms. Burbine's suggestion and just go right to the vote. Passage of this item requires a, let's see, two-thirds vote, I believe? Okay, so it requires a two-thirds vote to be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote and passed. All right, we move to Article Four.
Thank you, moderator.
Hold on for a second, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, for what purpose do you rise?
I'm Frash Legel, nine West Gate Lane. I vote to move, or I would, what am I supposed to say?
You're moving...
I move, sorry, I move to move Article Thirty to the floor.
Ah. The speaker has made a motion to advance consideration of Article Thirty in advance of Article Four. That requires a second. It's been moved and seconded. A motion to advance an article is debatable, by which I mean it can be debated, not that it's debatable. There is no one rising to debate the motion.
I will.
Sir?
Just under the wire. Sean O'Connor, one-thirty-two Tilden Road. Mr. Moderator, could you explain the process for reconsidering previously voted-on articles?
Yes, I will, and then we'll move to the vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you.
A motion to reconsider an article can be made at the conclusion of an article and before we take up the ensuing article. So...
So I would like to reconsider...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I would like to rec, vote to request that we reconsider Article Three and Article Twelve about the fields.
All right, well, I'm sorry, there's already a motion on the floor that we have to address.
That's why I was asking procedurally, thank you. I'll be right here.
I imagine you will be and I'll keep an eye open for you. All right, the motion on the floor is to advance consideration of Article Thirty prior to taking up Article Four. Requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, all those in favor of advancing consideration of Article Thirty kindly raise Thank you. All right, well said. Okay, right rear bleacher.
Seventy-nine.
Seven-nine. Right front bleacher.
Fifty-four, five-four.
Five-four. Right rear floor.
Twenty-nine, two-nine.
Two-nine. Right center floor.
Twenty-eight, two-eight.
Two-eight? Okay. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. One-zero. Left rear bleacher.
Six-three.
Six-three. Left front bleacher.
Two-one.
Two-one. Left rear floor.
Two-nine, thank you.
Left center floor.
Twenty-two, two-two.
Two-two. Left front floor includes clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
Eleven.
One-one?
One-one.
Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Right rear bleacher.
Thirteen.
One-three. Right front bleacher.
Fourteen, one-four.
One-four. Right rear floor.
Six.
Right center floor.
Seven.
Seven. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee. One-three. Left rear bleacher.
Eighteen.
One-eight. Left front bleacher.
Two.
Two. Left rear floor.
One-zero.
Left center floor.
Five.
Five. Left front floor includes clerk, selectmen, and registrars.
Seven.
By a vote of three-hundred-and-forty-six in the affirmative, ninety-five in the negative consideration of Article Thirty is advanced before Article Four. At this time, I recognize the gentleman to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Sean O'Connor, one-thirty-two Tilden Road. So I would like to request to reconsider the athletic fields in Article Three and Article Twelve.
All right. The motion that you are making is to reconsider the votes on Article Three-D and Article Twelve-eleven, correct?
Correct, and would you explain to people what that means? Or do you want me to take a crack?
Okay, well, we'll get to the explanation in a minute. It's been moved, there's a second discussion. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I was hoping to reconsider it, and then I would implore everybody who voted for it earlier to vote against revoting for it now, so that it, actually, can it be called again after I do it or is it only get one crack at it?
One crack at it.
One crack at it. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna revote on it, reconsider it, but everybody who voted for it, I would implore you to vote against revoting for it. You follow? Want to give it a try, Mr. Moderator? It's kinda tricky, but I think you can do it.
What the speaker is trying to do is to...
Not very eloquently, I apologize.
Is, is trying to close the door on future reconsideration by making a motion to reconsider now in the hopes that it's defeated. He doesn't really want to reconsider it. He wants to...
Because it's been far too long and too difficult.
Close the procedural possibility that it might come up later in the meeting. And it can only come up once. Well, honestly, I'd save my applause until whether you know whether it passes because of it, because if it passed, we'd be talking about it again, so, anyway. So, it's been moved. Did I hear a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, discussion, seriously? All those in favor of reconsidering what I will call the field articles, Article Three-D and Article Twelve subsection eleven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I think we should take a hand count on that. No, I'm kidding. The motion fails and those articles may not be reconsidered. And now a bunch more people are gonna go, so... Nope.
Well played.
Two-minute recess.
Oh my God.
You're gonna be hostile? I've wanted to say I'm believing in stuff on people, but I think that's just what I don't want to do. You know, I want to make a statement. I don't want to do that. 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 I don't want to do that.[1701.23]
to supply water to the town and demand for water from our residents using daily production and consumption data from the previous three years, including at least one year of drought, to make sure that during periods of highest demand, our wells are able to supply adequate water. The Town of Situate Water Resource Committee must agree that these conditions have been met before this temporary deferral can be removed, but in no event will the temporary deferral last for more than one year.
It's been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion, sir.
So may I speak now? Mr. Moderator, thank you. So why, why should you vote for this article? Simply put, we don't know whether we have enough water. It's that simple. It's been true for a while, and it was pretty much proven true in two thousand sixteen when we had a drought and we, we were within days of running out of water in our reservoir. It was also the conclusion of a, of a professional engineering study completed in two thousand three, that new water sources should be added before additional development. And yet, the town continues to approve additional residential development, adding more water consumers, even though no new water sources have been added. How does Article thirty address this? Well, we're gonna hit the pause button so we can make an informed decision. We're gonna hire professionals to find out, because while I believe I might know whether we have enough water, the reality is we should get professionals to figure this out. And the extra good news here is that in this water study, we're also going to research more about why we have brown water. And then we can act based on these facts, so that's how it works. Hit the pause button, find out what the facts are, and then act on them. And why is this happening? Well, the town believes that they must approve new development based on a, a state number that the DEP provides of roughly one point eight five million gallons per day. And that's on the average over the course of the year. And they rely on the number, but we don't really know whether we have that number, and it's complex, and I'll go through that a little bit. So what's wrong with that? Well, because it's an average number, but we're not an average town. Our population swells dramatically during the summer, some say it doubles. And while that happens, our wells can no longer meet the demand, and as a result, we rely on the reservoir. But the reservoir is not nearly large enough to cover the summer demand, because of course, it rains less in the summer. So for many years, we go into water bans. First of all, we start with a water ban by agreement with the state, meaning you can only sprinkle, I think it's one day a week. In five of the last six years, we went into a secondary ban on non-essential outdoor watering, and in three of those six years, we went into a complete ban on outdoor watering. Basically, you can't even use the hose, you have to fill a bucket to water your garden. And yet, the town continues to add more development. Guess what, folks? Phoenix is in the middle of the desert, and they don't have water bans. Situate is half-covered by water, and we have water bans all the time. Something's broken, and it needs to be fixed. So I had some serious concerns about bringing this article before the town. I worry about our tradespeople. I worry about the people who might be affected by a deferral of development in this town, because they're important residents and, and we care about them. And the single-family exclusion, which is part of this article, was originally there because, well, the small population changes that result from building houses here and there, it's not, it's within the margin for error. These predictions can't be that accurate in terms of how much water we're gonna consume, and so it didn't seem necessary to include them in the article. But conveniently, it also allows these people to continue working in businesses normal. This is also another point here about the towns, the tradespeople. This is a great time for us to be doing this. We don't have many opportunities like this. Our economy is robust, the, 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 um, building in our neighborhood towns is continuing. I mean, try to find a plumber, it's, it's hard, right? Like, things are going well. Now is an opportunity, and we won't get very many opportunities. And the other part is, well, hey, if there really isn't a water problem, and it turns out I've got this wrong, well, then the town should be able to resolve it quickly, and we'll be back to business as usual. So here's some more facts. Basically, going back to the part about the reservoir, so we've got the wells, they're producing about a million gallons per day, and in the winter, that's fine. That's about how much we consume, and all the consumption and the, and the production can really be handled mostly from the wells. And then our summer consumption will roughly doubles, so we'll say two million gallons per day. So even with the watering restriction in place, we're basically playing a lottery. We're deciding how many days is it gonna be that we go without rain or with less rain in the summertime before we hit, start hitting water bans and before we completely run out of water. It just seems unnecessary. Kind of an analogy, this would be, let's say, um, you have a job, you have a source of employment that doesn't pay during the summer, your, your, your work dries up in the summertime. So if you looked at your average income, you know, you'd be putting money in the bank. But let's say you have this really strange bank, and the bank says, you can only save a little bit, and after that, you might as well just spend it, because we won't let you save it anymore. And that's kind of what our reservoir is like. We can only save as much as goes in the reservoir. And then we hit the summer, we start using it up, and it's like you get to your vacation, and you get your personal bank account, you ran out of money, you don't get to go on vacation. That's where we're faced with our reservoir. Some say we don't really make, we don't really have a problem, but, you know, this, this town of Situate told the state that, that we would release enough water into the brook out of the reservoir so that the herring could start to come back. But last year, we didn't do it. We just said no. I think maybe they know there's a problem too, right? And our water infrastructure, I mean, you just saw the budget items, we, we need huge expenditures on our infrastructure, and we need time to fix it. Not only that, but global weather patterns are changing. We can't predict what the rain's gonna be, we can't rely on it being the same as it's been in the past. We've talked about the water leaks, and in Hummer Rock and other parts of town, we're losing huge amounts of water because we haven't been able to fix our infrastructure. And here's one that kind of scares me more than most. Well, we know the ocean levels are rising, right? Well, our wells can become contaminated with saltwater, and then, maybe contaminated is not the right word, but they get saltwater in them, and then you can't use them anymore. It's already happened to us during a storm, and it's just gonna keep happening, so we need to bring on new supply. But we have great people in our water department, they work hard, they know what they're doing, we just need to give them time to fix the problems. And now is the time to act. Our population is about to change in a way that is dramatically different than most of us have ever experienced. There's really no time to wait. Between the year two thousand and the most recent data on our town website, so whatever that is, eighteen or nineteen years, our population has barely grown, from seventeen thousand eight sixty-three in the census in two thousand to eighteen thousand seven hundred sixty, almost no growth. Given projects already approved in the last year or so, but not yet completed, including Toll Brothers, we're gonna add another six hundred sixty-nine residents, or about the same amount of growth in one year as we had in the previous eighteen. And ready for this? If all the projects currently in the queue get approved, we're gonna add another one thousand three hundred ninety-three residents, for a total change of over two thousand people in like a two-year period. That's eleven percent growth after almost no growth for eighteen years, and still no new water sources, not yet. Lots of promises, but none that have come online. So, these new people are gonna probably also want to have their friends come in the summer, and the population's gonna double there. The time is now, the time to act. Please vote yes for Article thirty.
From the Board of Selectmen, Selectman Canfield.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'll try to be quick, because we're running out of time, but, um, there is no doubt that the town of Situate is facing serious challenges concerning our water supply and delivery system. As most everyone knows, there's been ongoing concern and priority in the town and on the Board of Selectmen for some time. But we also know that these problems cannot be solved quickly. In order to address the decades-long neglect to our system, we need to improve our infrastructure, remove and prevent sediment into the system, and expand our capacity. And I want to just take a brief moment and talk about those three areas. Improving our infrastructure. Twenty million dollars has already been spent to remove the, to replace our cast iron pipes. This will be completed this spring. Eight hundred thousand was approved tonight to engineer a solution to the Hummer Rock water main problems. Four million was designed, was approved to design a new plant. On removing and preventing sediment, tonight we allocated another twenty, two hundred thousand dollars for ice pigging, which cleans out the pipes. And you gotta see the video when Kevin posts it, when they do the next one, that's gonna be starting soon. We also approved eight million dollars to construct a green sand filter to make sure that what comes into the system isn't mucking up our pipes in the next, in the first place. We've taken steps to improve the, oops, we're not... We, um, we've taken the steps to improve our infrastructure and our capacity, that will give us more water in order to properly flush the system, which we haven't been able to do for these issues. To expand our capacity, we're engineering, is underway to, um, to expand the reservoir already, has been voted on in prior town meetings. Well seventeen, uh, the green sand filter will provide additional capacity. And reducing leaks in the system, like the Hummer Rock proposal, or, uh, funding, and, um, and, and things that will undoubtedly be found in our water survey, will also expand our supply. Conservation issue, um, conservation requirements by the planning department and also advocated by our Water Resources Committee are also making great strides. And we all remember when we did have the drought, it was remarkable how we all came together, and we know how to conserve water, and it's just a fact of life. And even if the, uh, the town were to, um, well, I'll get to that. And the, the town continues to explore other areas where we may get additional sources of water. These are all things that are in the works, that we are working towards, that we're trying to, to address. And most importantly, as John mentioned, BOS, um, has approved a contract that will do a comprehensive analysis of our water system. This will be an additional tool in which we can map our future to protect our water system. We have an aggressive plan for managing our water challenges. This will take time, as I said. Curbing development, when we already have identified this as a key area of investment and priority, will only hurt residents by restricting their property rights and giving businesses pause before they decide to invest in our community. In addition, the way that the article is written, Town Council has advised that it is, um, it's really a directive. It does not have, it's not legal or illegal, it simply is a statement, and it's not really enforceable. So for all these reasons, that we have a plan, that we've invested and continue to invest to improve our supply and our capacity and our quality, uh, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted not to support this petition.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, um, and thank you, Selectwoman Canfield. That was quite a seminar on the supply side. Mr. Bemke certainly is trying to address the demand side. The Advisory Committee agrees with the petitioner that water is both precious and scarce in Situate. I and my fellow members commend the petitioner on joining the Water Resources Committee to try to ma, uh, address change from the inside. Based upon advice from Town Council, the Advisory Committee has been told that the current article is unenforceable and discriminatory. We voted two members in favor of the article and six opposed.
All right. Speakers from the floor, lady to my left.
Mary Ellen Schloss, fifty Manlot Road. I guess I have a question for the petitioner, just in looking at how you devised this. It's my understanding that our summertime problem is largely driven by irrigation and people watering lawns, so this petition says, you know, no multifamily housing, but, I mean, you could have a two-family house with a small lawn that uses far, far less water than a, a house with, you know, an acre of lawn where somebody's trying to irrigate it all, all the time. So I just wondered if you've given, given any thought, thought to that? I'm all, all in support of, of conservation and preserving the resource, but I, um, I'm just a little concerned that we should be focusing on the size of lawns and, and the irrigation as opposed to whether something's a two-family or a one-family or a three-family. Thank you.
Yes, the proponent to answer the question.
Thank you for your question. This will be a challenge tonight, folks. So I think the, your question is an excellent one, and there, there's no simple answer, but the, the focus of the exemption was more around our ability to forecast the water consumption and whether it was important. I think the question of why our water usage doubles during the summer is one that's not been answered, and it's one of the most fundamental things that if you don't, if you can't measure it, then you can't manage it. We don't, we know that it does, we know it goes from a million to two million. Surely, there are some, I forgot what they're called, people who go to Florida for the winter and come back in the summer. Thank you. But that can't, but not anymore, that can't, that can't account for double. And, and maybe it's lawn watering, and maybe it's the boats in the harbor that rinse off or that need to rinse their motors. Or maybe it's the guests that come and stay in a house that might have two people in it in the winter and ten people in it over the Fourth of July weekend. But that's one of the things that we want to have studied so that we can understand it, so that we can manage it better, and, and, and make sure that we have enough water for everyone.
Gentleman at the center of the microphone.
My name is, uh, my name is Jonathan Belber, I live at thirty-two First Parish Road. I'm gonna think a little bit outside the box here. As a, as a teacher, I have the privilege of working, um, through a nonprofit and teaching in the six Situate public schools. And one, um, effort we're making in the schools is to install rain barrels at all six schools for water catchment purposes. There are currently rain barrels at the Teak Sherman Community Garden, a garden that grows food, uh, for residents, but also organic produce is delivered to the Situate Food Pantry. Uh, there are currently rain barrels at the Hadley School, they're, um, being installed at Wabatac in the coming weeks, and I think the goal is to have them at all six schools. So my question is, uh, for the selectmen and selectwomen, and perhaps for the, for the Department of Public Works, Mr. Cafferty, is, and those are mere drops in the bucket, I realize, um, but it would seem, um, that it would be very interesting and neat for Situate to take a lead in water catchment, um, practices, sustainable methods of collecting water for those lawns that are gonna go in, uh, at the Toll Brother houses, for the lawns of all residents, including myself, who needs to improve, um, my own rain barrel water catchment. But it'd be very interesting, my question is, would the town, um, consider leading by example with all public buildings trying to catch and, and, um, hold water for usage as an example to residents, current and future?
To answer the question, Chairman Dan He.
Yes, I think the town should. And the town did take the lead when it came for renewable energy, and my feeling is the town should do the same exact thing with its public buildings, we set the policy, and that way the residents hopefully will follow through. Thank you, thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Andrew Boyle, thirty-six Station Street. Uh, my question is specifically for the Town Council, uh, it's a two-part question. One, was a written opinion on this issue prepared and made available to the public? And two, were any other legal sources or outside consultants questioned upon when providing this opinion? Like, other legal scholars or, or anybody with a specific expertise in constitutional law?
Town Council.
The first question you asked is a very simple answer, no.
Cindy, could you speak right into the mic, please? Thank you.
Can you hear me now? The first question, there was no request for an official legal opinion, and none was prepared. I have made my position on the article known in the moderators' meeting and when I was asked to look at the article, um, but there was never a written opinion on that article. In terms of how I reached my conclusion, that it doesn't pass muster as drawn up?
No, 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 not how, I, I, I didn't want you to devolve into that, just if you, if you consulted any outside source, or anybody else's opinion, or it wasn't strictly your own.
Yes. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Mr. Moderator, John Woodhick, five ninety-four Country Way.
Sir.
I have the advantage of being a member of the Capitol Budget Advisory Committee, have been for a few years, and I've seen all of the Capitol projects, and I'm happy to tell you... And I'm happy to tell you that our selectmen and most notably our Town Administrator and the Head of Public Works have a number of projects underway to both conserve the existing water supply, for example, stopping leaks in Homaroc, and to add to it. Mr. Moderator, you remember perhaps that when you were a very young selectman and I was a very young member of the Advisory Committee circa 1987, we bought a parcel of land off of Country Way called the Dolan Well Field. At the time, we said, as a town, we'll set this aside because someday we're going to need it, we're going to develop. Well, it's my understanding from the Town Administrator that that well field recently passed state inspection, that the water is deemed to be safe and appropriate, and that we are within, I believe, the next two years or sooner, going to finally bring the Dolan Well Field online. What I'm saying is we're doing a lot to make sure that we continue to have adequate water resources. This article has a serious problem. You can't do it. It's illegal, apparently, and I'm not sure we'd want to, terminating development. I would much rather we continue on vigorously adding to and improving our water supply. So I recommend a no vote on this article. And I...don't worry, these guys are doing a lot, these ladies are doing a lot, as Selectman Canfield has just told us. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Whitaker gives me the painful reminder that in 1986, I proposed a moratorium that was turned down at a town meeting. But we did buy some well sites, so maybe we'll get to use them now. Speaker to my right.
Ann Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. While I fully understand the individuals' concerns about water and it is a finite resource, I think that there is more that needs to be done to this article to make it palatable. Therefore, I would recommend that we indefinitely postpone this article so that it can be made legitimate, so that questions are answered that need to be answered, and bring it back in the fall at Fall Town Meeting.
Okay, that's a motion to indefinitely postpone. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
This needs to be legitimized, and I understand the concern about water. I was there in 1986. I was there in 2005 when we talked about the number of houses that we could build before we ran out of water. And I was also told at the time that it was a finite number, that it was an arbitrary number. We're not really sure. I know that the Planning Board has tried and is working diligently to come up with, through the master plan and through other avenues, to look at a definitive water study to ensure that we know where we're going and we know how we're going to get there. This, on the face of it, is really arbitrary, and there are so many people that it will hurt. I would really, really like it to be indefinitely postponed until we can get it the way it should be.
Before I recognize the next speaker, who will be the gentleman at the center of the mic. Procedurally, here's where we're at. We have a motion to indefinitely postpone that has been seconded. That would become a substitute motion if it were approved. Right now, we are going to have a debate on the advisability or inadvisability of indefinitely postponing action on Article 30. Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
I look out in the harbor, and I see all the water we'd ever need. Alls we have to do is take the salt out of it. Now, they tell me it's too expensive, but the day will come when it'll be cheap compared to what you're going to pay other ways to get your water. They should get together with two or three other towns and see about building a plant to desalinate the water and supply water, because you've got all the water you need and it's lapping up our beaches, and they're telling us in 25 years, half of Front Street will be gone. And they'll let them use it, and it'll slow it down. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the gentleman to my left if he'd be willing to defer to the speaker at the center of the mic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Farah. I live at 17 Cairo Circle, and this is Cordelia that you've all been oohing and aahing at. And I would urge you to think about Cordelia and the fact that she's been here until almost 11:00 PM this evening to debate this particular issue. Water is obviously a paramount issue to all of us. We need it as a basic element of survival in this town, both for our property values and also living daily. I do not feel...let me back up for a moment. There are a lot of really intelligent people who are working on this issue. There seem to be a lot of...there's a lot of complexity to it. It will certainly take a lot of time, dedication, and resources. There are a lot of people who are dedicated to turning around the complex water issues we have. However, I feel that the town has not been able to demonstrate the sense of urgency that these problems require. And so whether or not we push forward with the motion as it is tonight, or we defer to remedy some of the legal challenges, I urge everyone in this room to please force the town to make the complex water issues the urgent priority that Cordelia and all of our children desperately require. Thank you.
Thank you for being a gentleman. Gentlemen to my left.
My name's Jim Kenaway, 8 Vinyl Ave. I agree, I've had brown water since I've lived here, and it's getting better and better. I'm actually pretty impressed with what's happened over the last couple of years with the Water Department, what they've done. As you can tell by my standard dress, I'm a builder, but I'm not a Toll Brothers. And I'm pretty sure what you're putting on the table wouldn't affect them at all, correct? Because their permits are already through. Well, I don't have Toll Brothers money. I don't have their pull, or I would have developed the Proven Grounds. Actually, I wouldn't. I thought that was a bad idea. But what I'm saying is, what you're trying to do is going to hurt the little guy like me, but not the big guys like them, or you would have put this up before they got their permits. So I really think there are other ways to go about getting us all to be better with our water and getting us all to force the town to do better things with the water than to shut down younger, smaller contractors that are really just trying to feed their children. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
William Thomas Tivitts, 79 Jericho Road. Jericho Road, excuse me. I just want to second everything that gentleman just said. Thank you.
That was the same exact thing I was going to say. Excellent.
Lady to my left.
Karen Pritchard, 36 Meeting House Lane. First of all, I want to thank John Bemke for putting forth this petition. I know that it may be viewed as having some significant technical flaws, but I applaud his courage for actually bringing this forth. Not an easy thing to do. The town is spending a ton of money fixing things, and we're just fixing stuff without really truly a plan for the town and our community about what our water needs are on a long-term basis. I, you know, work in the construction industry. I could never get approved this kind of money without a strategic plan for what the end result should look like. There's no doubt that we should spend money on maintenance, but we should also know what it is that our future holds. I think it's completely unacceptable that we do not have a strategic plan. I think it's completely unacceptable that we're spending millions and millions of dollars without having the benefit of having expertise brought into this town to help us understand what our future should be. We haven't looked at what other towns, you know, kind of the world-class product should look like for the future. And I think if nothing else, what this proposal does is it holds our town government's feet to the fire to make sure we get that done before we continue spending a lot of money on fixing stuff that may or may not need to be fixed and before we make further commitments to bring or increase the usage base to our community. It's basic.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
James Hunt, Manlot Road, God's country. In the past five years, the legislature here has gained a new voice and made things happen. We have learned how to speak, and I compliment the petitioner here for speaking so eloquently. The question is whether or not this matter should be indefinitely postponed to a future date. I oppose that because I think this legislative body needs to be heard tonight to make itself clear. Obviously, if this is accepted, it will not be enforceable, but it is not a waste of time. The message needs to be sent. The message needs to be heard. I don't know a lot about much, but I do know zoning. In my discussions with legal counsel, not so much this counsel, although I appreciate her input, I've been told that a zoning bylaw, patterned after state-approved pro forma exercises, can indeed impose a moratorium on building. I'm not so sure a moratorium on building is what needs to be done, but what needs to be done is crafting a bylaw that cannot be declared unenforceable. By doing so, I believe that that and only that will force the hand and get things done. This town needs to get off the dime. We've been told over and over again that marvelous things are happening. We just voted to spend $10 million on athletic fields, and a teacher stood here and said she can't lock her classroom so her third graders can be safe. That... Priorities are out of order. On the question of whether or not to indefinitely postpone, I strongly recommend a no vote on this motion, and I'll be back to talk about the main motion. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Mike Wester, 44 Amy's Way. I just got a point of order. Why are we discussing questions that the towns attorney said are illegal or against the law? I mean, like, why are we debating it? I get everybody wants to make a point. I think the point is well-known. I think the selectmen are aware of this and have spent tons of money. But I mean, I guess, why are we continuing the debate? The voice has been heard, they're working on it, this can't be enacted anyways, so... That's my question.
Okay. Well, here's an answer. The article was lawfully on the town meeting warrant. The citizens collected the requisite number of signatures under Chapter 39, as is their right to do. The Board of Selectmen, as it must do when it receives a petition with the required number of signatures, placed the article on the warrant. The Board of Selectmen is not allowed to manage or reword the proposal, so they didn't. They went on the warrant as proposed. Now, there is the question of whether it can be enforced. Of course, I have an opinion, but I'm not going to offer my opinion. So the question you ask is, why is it on the warrant? It's on the warrant because...
Why are we still discussing it? I think it's your right to end the discussion or not allow discussion, correct?
Well, let me finish my answer. People get to put things on the warrant if they get the right number of signatures. It's the citizen's right of petition. Now, last time I checked, nobody has put a black robe on me and given me the power to just rule from the bench and bang my gavel and say something's illegal. I'm aware of some moderators that will do that. I don't happen to be one of them. If people want a petition and want to talk about something, well, damn it, they can do that. If it gets voted and it can't happen, it can't be enforced, it won't be. Pardon my swearing. Lady at the center of the mic.
Hi, I'm Ally Walsh, 426 Country Way, and I hope that we will continue this discussion because I think the main point is we cannot answer how much water do we have, how much per household, how much per person. My husband and I went about a month and a half ago to a water meeting at the Public Safety Office Department in a building that did not have enough parking spaces for all the people who wanted to attend. And the question was asked by Steve Pritchard, a member of our Planning Board, how much water is used per household. The gentleman who runs the Water Department was not at the meeting, but the head of the DPW was, and he was very nice and said, "Well, we'll put it out there and get that number." I'm not looking online, so the number may be out there. But the point was, we are trying to understand how much, not an average number, because as John Bemke pointed out, the summer bumps our water usage up hugely. I have never watered a lawn. I do not have a sprinkler system. I have lost large major trees. Every single year, I lose large shrubs, massive rhododendrons, large PJMs, because I'm following the rules. So I hear about all these open permits for homes to be built, Toll Brothers, et cetera. I get it, that people are going to come here, but we can't provide sufficient water for every person to enjoy and use their own homes and yards and gardens. I don't have a boat, so I'm not washing down a boat, but I would like to have a garden. So I think my understanding of what John is trying to do here, and it may be legal, maybe not, but just to say, please, let's be able to answer the question about water usage in the town of Situate, and we want to know now. And if it puts a few months or whatever it takes, let's just pay the money, get the experts, get the answers. Thank you.
Couple things. I'm going to recognize this gentleman who's been waiting patiently over here. A little bit of housekeeping. We adopted a bylaw a few years ago, I forget now, about closing up shop at 11:00. What...folks, we got to finish this discussion tonight. We can't let this drag out over a couple nights. The people who are interested are here. So I'm going to ask for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can complete this discussion. Okay, it's been moved, seconded, discussion, there being none, two-way. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? So voted declared unanimous there. Now it's legal. Okay, so, going to let this gentleman speak. There's nobody else up at the mics except Ms. Burbine is waiting for action on her motion. So here's what I propose we do. The gentleman will offer his views. Oh, you're shaking your head?
No, sir. If I'm out of order, I'm out of order. I want to move the question.
Oh, wow.
If I'm out of order, just tell me.
You know, at that, I'll even be quiet. The question has been moved. Is it seconded? You don't really want to discuss that. Now, remember, we're moving the question on whether to amend the main motion to become one of indefinite postponement. If that motion passes, that becomes the main motion, and then we have to vote again on indefinitely postponing. On the other hand, if the motion to indefinitely postpone fails, we're back at the original motion made by the proponent, the one that he read out to you. And I think at that point, we're probably ready for a vote on that one, too. So we're ready. All those in favor of moving the question on the motion to indefinitely postpone signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay. You have decided not to cut off debate, and you now wish to discuss the motion to indefinitely postpone further. Is that really what you meant? I didn't think so. So let's try this again. If you want to terminate debate on Ms. Burbine's motion...where are you, Ann? Oh, there you are. Thank you. On Ann's mo...pardon me, on Ms. Burbine's motion to indefinitely postpone this article. If you want to cut off debate and just vote on that one, you vote aye. If you want to keep talking about it, which is your right, vote no. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion to amend the main article to become one of indefinite postponement? become one of indefinite postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Mr. Tibbetts voted no. So, all right, so, the question's been moved, debate is terminated on whether to discuss making indefinite postponement the main motion. All those in favor of amending the main motion to become one of indefinite postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We now return to the main motion, which is adopting the petition that John has offered up to you. Remarkably, there are people at the mic who want to continue to discuss. Gentleman at the center, Mike. That's you, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. James Hunt, Manlaw Road. Once again, I spent nine years on the planning board, I am pro-development in a reasonable sense. This is not an anti-development article. This legislative body needs to be heard once again, and we need action from Town Hall on this water question. Mike, I have a question for the petitioner. John, you are a member of the Water Study Committee, and you talked about a water study underway that is lacking an element. What is that?
The lacking element is action. The water study that's underway has been talked about for over a year, and as I understand it, there now is an RFP that is going out. So there is progress, but it's just taking too long.
Once that RFP is out, bids are in, award is made, your best guess on duration of the water study to come to some reasonable conclusion. Is that beyond your scope?
Maybe Sean could guess, Sir Kevin, how long it would take for them to do the study.
To answer the question.
Mr. Moderator. Kevin Caffey, DPW Director. Could you repeat the question? I missed part of it.
The petitioner states that there is an RFP out for professional services to assist, excuse me, assist in the water study. When do you think that award might be made, should suitable applicants come forward?
So, we put an RFP out to a few select engineering firms. I wrote it with the Water Resources Board, Becky Malmet, and also Steve Pritchard. As a combination, we put it together. The costs should be coming back in April 15th. We'll make an evaluation. All three parties, actually about five of us, will read all the proposals, put it forth, and then go in front of the selectmen and hire one of those, one of those engineering firms. So, it's a pretty detailed RFP, and there's a lot of requirements. We were able to use a lot of what Steve had with the planning board, and really, I think we're going to have a really good document when all said and done. I can't tell you it's going to take two months, there's a lot of data to review. We'll know more when we see the RFPs and what their timeline and schedule is, if that helps.
Yes, that does, thank you. That tells me that at least that water study does have some potential. But I still strongly recommend that this body support this petitioner's motion and continue to apply pressure where pressure is needed. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Thank you. Paul Barkwitz, 18 Damon Lane. I think the purpose of the petition is really to send a signal to the town that these water issues should be a priority. I think we've heard from the selectmen and staff that it is a priority, things are being done, these studies are going forward, and I think we ought to give the town a chance to do that. I think it's bad policy to vote on petitions that are unenforceable, petitions that may very well be illegal. And you've heard from several people that adopting a moratorium is going to hurt people, it's going to hurt our economy, and it's going to put a stigma on the town. We're going to be known in the area as the town with a water moratorium. That stigma's going to last after the water moratorium is lifted. It's premature, it hurts the community, and I think you want to send the message, I think you've sent a message, we should vote against this. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. I don't support this petition, because I am concerned that we will end up caught up in court for numbers of years trying to implement it. When somebody tries to sue us, whether we win or lose, it's still going to be a number of years that it will be stayed in some format or not. So, we should just get on with the business of finding out what our problem. Personally, I don't think Situate has a water supply problem, it has water consumption party. The problem is simple, people expect to have Augusta Green lawns all summer long. People, that's just not going to make it in this new sustainable world that we are going into. We can't sustain that type of watering. And we do have a ban in place, I think it started April 1st, that we can only do it once a week. Routinely violated, I walk my dog early in the morning, we walk through plenty of puddles every day of the week in front of the same properties. If we really want to address this, some of it's going to have to get into the enforcement level. Unfortunately, that means that certain people within the town government's going to have to get up early to see when people are abusing their rights. But I would recommend that we vote against this, because I don't think it's going to get through a court system. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Matt Brown, 122 Tilden Road. We've been asked, "Why are we discussing this? It's going to be illegal." Now, let me tell you something about legal and illegal. If you have two lawyers, you can have a discussion about what's legal and what's illegal. The only person that's going to decide what's legal is a judge. And what we came here for, and what this motion was for, was to make it perfectly clear to the selectmen that we are serious about this. And I suggest that if the people in this room that want to have a solution to the water problem, that they vote yes on this issue. I move the, I can't do that right now, can I?
Nice try.
Thank you.
Now I know which students are dozing off at the beginning of class. To my right.
Thank you. Brian McKenna, 50 Sylvester Road. I was hoping you could help me with my math here. We voted earlier to spend $4 million to study the cost of a new water treatment plan. From history, and from one of the earlier things that we planned that was approved, we know that it's going to be cost 20 times what the plans are to actually do it. So really, we're talking about next year getting hit with an $80 million water treatment plan, which comes to my math to about $11,000 per property. That's what we're looking at in the future. So, the motion to focus the town, to actually get its act together before it builds all the houses that are coming up in the next year, makes a lot of sense to me, but probably I have my math wrong, perhaps you can enlighten me. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Freya Schlegel, Westgate Lane. It's a two-parter. Situate, as known as the town with brown water. We have a terrible reputation for our water already, and I'm an environmentalist, and every single one of you is drinking out of little plastic water bottles that are going to take forever to come back to the earth. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Mr. Moderator. James Toomey, Neilgate Street. I just heard someone say that this article would provide a solution. I have been in the business of municipal law for a long time, I've drafted a number of our building moratoriums, and I can tell you that this one will not pass muster. It is not a solution, it's going to invite litigation, expose the town to damages, and we're going to be spending money on lawyers and litigation and paying damages that we should be spending on fixing the water problems. So I strongly urge everybody to vote no on this. Thank you.
Lady to my left.
I'm Alma Morrison of 18 Tickner Court, and I move the question.
Motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate and to bring the matter to a vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. Once they get a second, second, all those in favor of terminating debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. We now come to the main motion, which is to approve the petitioner's motion. I'll try a voice vote, and then we'll count it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Tell ours kindly, take your places.
Mr. Moderator, what is the quantum of the vote?
I'm sorry?
What is the quantum of the vote required?
Well, that's an interesting question.
That's why I asked.
It's not a zoning bylaw, which would require a two-thirds vote. It's not a general bylaw, which would require a majority vote. So in the absence of any other course of action, and Madam Town Counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's a majority.
Thank you.
I hear no objections, so majority it will be. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the petitioner's motion, raise your voting cards. Right rear bleacher.
13.
13?
Yep.
1-3. Right front bleacher.
15, 1-5.
1-5. Right rear floor. 2-4. Right center floor.
21, 2-1.
2-1. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee.
6.
6. Left rear bleacher.
11.
1-1. Left front bleacher.
6.
6. Left rear floor. 1-1. Left center floor.
14, 1-4.
1-4. Left front floor includes clerks, selectmen, and registrars.
1.
1. All those opposed, kindly raise your voting cards. Now, look, once we, once we count this, don't all run out the door, because it's just quick procedural things to discuss, then you can run out the door. Okay. Right rear bleacher.
15, 1-5.
1-5. Right front bleacher.
22, 2-2.
2-2. Right rear floor. 6. Okay. Right center floor.
9.
9. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee.
13, 1-9.
Thank you, 1-9. Left rear bleacher.
16.
1-6. Left front bleacher.
5.
5. Left rear floor. 9? Okay, 9. Left center floor.
7.
7. Left front floor includes clerks, selectmen, and registrars.
20.
2-0. By a vote of 122 in the affirmative to 128 in the negative, the motion fails. All right, now wait, 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 hold on. We still, not tonight, tomorrow, we have this room tomorrow at 7:00. I'm sure you're dying to come back. So, please come back. We have the entire budget to do, that's very important. I will accept a motion to adjourn town meeting until tomorrow night, this location, at 7:00. It's been moved, it's seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? See you tomorrow.